Good evening. It is Monday, February 6, 2023, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I think this is Ms. Di Maria, unless you have something you want to update on this.
No, Ms. Di Maria indicated that there was nothing new to report at this time, that we'll pick it up at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. The next item on the agenda, is it 7:05 yet? Yeah. Is a, the opening of a public hearing for 241-245 Turnpike Road. Marina, you want to update us?
Sure. Since this is the first public hearing, I'll read the public hearing notice. This is major site plan approval, special permit for lower impact development, 241 to 245 Turnpike Road, assessors map 27 parcels eight and nine. Per Section 174-10 of the Southborough Zoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, February 6, 2023, in the McCallum Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, and via Zoom to consider the application of Park House 241 LLC for major site plan approval at 7:05 PM. Per Section 174-13.3 of the Southborough Zoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, February 6, 2023, in the McCallum Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, and via Zoom to consider the application of Park House 241 LLC for special permit for lower impact development at 7:05 PM. These hearings concern a proposed 54,000-square-foot two-story building for a proposed membership club organized as a condominium which will provide, one, community space for members' use and events; two, accessory use, up to 32 unit owners for parking of cars. The 1.8-acre parcel is located in a highway business zoning district at 241-245 Turnpike Road, assessors map 27 parcels eight and nine. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the Planning Board's webpage at www.southbrowetown.com/planing-dashboard or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting can do so in person or via Zoom remote participation by going online to www.southbrowetown.com/remotemeetings. Mimi Lutrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. And now for the update. So we have nicknamed this project Car Condos. So everybody is aware, it kind of gives you an idea of the project. So to give you an update to getting to this point, an application was received and filed with the town clerk on January 11, 2023. It was filed with the town clerk on January 17. It was submitted to Fussin O'Neill for town, the town's engineering consultant, for review. A legal ad was posted with the town clerk and provided to the newspaper for public ads on January 23 and January 30. The was, the legal notice was sent to towns and agencies as required. Planning Board also received copies of the submission, and the submission was also distributed to town departments for comment. We received the green cards back and the certified return receipt, green cards and mailing receipts the Thursday prior to this public hearing, and we have not received any comments from town departments. Is that correct? So no comments back at this point, although it was submitted to all the departments as required. And that brings us to this evening, public hearing number one. I'd also like to just point out, we did receive Fussin O'Neill comments this afternoon, which we distributed to the various entities.
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, welcome. We have a microphone there, so if you want to talk, you can come up here, or there's another one over there if you want to stand up there.
So I think Catherine Garrowhan started.
I will follow her. Do we unmute her, or does she?
Can you launch Catherine Garrowhan?
Up to panelists.
She's on. Catherine, you just have to unmute yourself.
Now she can hear you.
I'm not sure they can hear.
Oh, she's unmuted now. No, she's unmuted. Catherine, can you hear us? Do we need to?
Can you hear us?
Okay.
So we have to mute. This.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry if you're waiting for me, I couldn't hear.
So we do also have a PowerPoint presentation, I don't know who.
I have that one.
Okay, perfect.
We're a little rough.
I think we all are.
Madam Chair, I could begin if you'd like me to.
Sure, please.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, I'm Catherine Garrowhan from the law firm of Bowditch and Dewey. I'm here tonight on behalf of Park House 241 LLC for a proposed project at 241 and 245 Turnpike Road, which has come to be known as the Car Condo Project. As you will hear in tonight's presentation, Park House is proposed to be a membership community for car enthusiasts. With me tonight are Nadja Stratton and Stephanie Conover from Park House, the owner and developer, David LaPointe, and Nate Bouts from Beals and Thomas, the civil engineers, Chad Willman of Balance Architects, and Andrew Arsino of Vaness and Associates for Transportation. If you go to the next slide, please. As, as stated, thank you. As stated in the application, the requests before the board for this project are for major site plan review with two waiver requests. First, a waiver for landscaping, from the landscaping requirements for plantings, for reduction in quantity of shrubs along the planting areas, and second, a landscaping waiver from requirements for street planting area for a reduction from the minimum 15-foot depth of the landscape buffer strip. Also, before you tonight is an application for lower impact development special permit with waiver, two waiver requests from the rules and regulations for LID special permits, one for providing water balance calculation, and the other from providing hydrogeologic assessment. Next slide, please. Other requirements for the project have included an A&R Plan endorsement for lot merger, which you endorsed on December 12, 2022, also from the Zoning Board of Appeals, both of which were granted by a decision dated October 5, 2022. First, a special permit for use in the Business Highway District to allow indoor recreational use with an accessory use of private garage for more than three automobiles. That decision was conditioned on the inclusion within the condominium covenants that would stipulate that there will be no long-term exterior parking of vehicles, and also a variance to allow minimum front yard setback of approximately 43 feet where a minimum of 75 feet is required in the BH zone. Also required will be a notice of intent and stormwater management permit from the Southborough Conservation Commission, a sewage disposal system approval from the Board of Health, and the project will require the issuance of a state highway access permit for mass DOT for construction activities or utility connections that will occur within the Route 9 state highway layout. To start, before we get into more technical presentations, the Park House team would like to introduce you to themselves as a company and what they hope to bring to Southborough. So I'd like to hand off to Nadja, and she'll continue with the slides.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Is my mic on? Great. Well, I also wanted to say thank you for taking the time to review our application. My name is Nadja, I'm with the Park House team. I wanted to take a couple minutes just to introduce our team and our project, just because a little unusual, and then I'll hand it off to the experts to give you the actual data. So we're the current owners of 241 and 245 Turnpike Road. The Park House brand was created specifically for this car storage concept, but we have a family real estate business called Transatlantic. We've been in business about 25 years, started by my father. Grandfather was in real estate for a million years before that. There are four members of our team, so there's my father, who's slowly trying to tiptoe into retirement without us noticing. He's still involved mostly in an advisory role, myself. I've been involved on and off really my whole life, but full-time for the past 12 years. There's my sister Zariah, who's down in Florida. We have a property down there, so she manages operations down there. Stephanie, our VP, has been also involved for about 25 years, basically another sister in the family. So I wanted to give this presentation just because it's a little bit of an unusual use, and just wanted to explain a little bit what our vision is and what we're trying to achieve. They do exist throughout the country, but none in this area yet. Yes, thank you. So Park House is a community for car enthusiasts. The proposed building will consist of 32 garage units that will be sold as garage condos, as commercial condominiums. The units are intended to hold people's vehicle collections, and then we'll build a clubhouse where the community can sort of gather and socialize. The units are designed to face inward so that we're sort of fostering the sense of community within the building. Sorry. Next slide, please. So more about the proposed units. They'll house between two and six cars. They'll have tall ceilings so they can accommodate optional mezzanines. The idea is that you can spend time in your own unit with your collection or in the clubhouse, sort of socializing with other unit owners. Please. I will let our architects go into much more detail here, but I just wanted to give a sense again that there are internal drive aisles, all the garage doors face inward, and sort of all the activity will happen within the building. Next slide, please. So in general, we think the Park House will make a pretty good neighbor. It's a visually attractive building, especially compared to what's there right now, although I realize it's a pretty low bar to clear. It's a low-impact use, there's not going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out. Because of the internal drive aisles, most of the activity is happening indoors. It's a low use on public resources, we don't need public school use or anything like that. The units will be owned, so they'll be generating real estate taxes, and also some sort of buy-in and investment from the community members there. And we envision at least some of the people coming from outside of Southborough, so it's sort of a destination, bringing people in. We do like this site in particular. Next slide, please. First and foremost, because it's been sitting vacant for so long, or unused for so long, it's sort of crying out to be activated. It's easy access for us through 90 and 495. It is very appealing that it's actually on Route 9, so users can access it without driving through the local neighborhoods. It's really exciting for us that Rad Exotics is right next door, both sort of business opportunities for us, but also it sort of creates a little bit of an identity in that area of Route 9. So that's kind of it for me. I'm happy to answer the questions about who our team is and what our concept is, but otherwise I'll hand it off to the people that know what they're talking about.
So Madam Chair, I'll, I'll talk again just for a couple of minutes and then hand off to the technical consultants. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So just for a very brief orientation to the site, the property is just west of Parkerville Road, on the north side of 9, in between Rad Exotics and the Southborough Executive Park in the Business Highway District. The project site is bounded by residential properties to the north, and a very small part of the property on the north side, which is not proposed to be developed, is located in a residential district. And as you know, the applicant intends to merge these two, the two lots comprising the property for the project. Next slide, please. So we've provided some views. On the left, you can see views of the property showing the old Andria's Restaurant at 241 Turnpike. On the right, you can see the office building located at 245 Turnpike. Next slide, please. This is another view from across, across Route 9, showing the two existing buildings and the land between them. You can kind of see the slope in between the two buildings. Next slide, please. This is the proposed layout for a merged lot, which the civil engineer will present in more detail. Next slide, please. The, we just, very briefly, I'll go through why we believe that the project is in keeping with the major site plan review criteria set, set forth in the code. It provides adequate access for fire service and equipment, adequate provision for utilities, and stormwater drainage, and is designed to meet criteria spelled out in the code, such as minimizing volume of cut-and-fill, number of removed trees and wetland vegetation, the extent of the stormwater flow increase, soil, soil erosion and threat of air or water pollution. The applicant provided stormwater materials with the application and will appear before the Conservation Commission. The project maximizes pedestrian and vehicular safety and convenience without, within and going out of the site. The proposed use and structure are not expected to increase traffic to the surrounding area. The vehicular movement is designed to be safe and convenient and arranged not to disturb abutting properties. Consultants will provide you with further details on these matters. The project minimizes obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible location, locations. The project minimizes visual intrusion when viewed from public ways or residentially used or zoned premises. It minimizes glare and lighting intrusion, does not depart from the character of the buildings in the vicinity. The project provides an attractive new structure, which will be setback from roadways consistent with surrounding properties, and the most closely located residential properties are shielded from the proposed development by the tree line and other natural buffers. Next slide, please. The project satisfies the LID requirements as described in its submitted development impact statement for the LID special permit application, and the project satisfies criteria set forth in state law for special permits because the user structure is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code. The zoning code allows for a range of commercial and business uses in the BH district either as a right or pursuant to a special permit, and the proposed use is compatible with the neighboring commercial uses in the district. So that said, I'll now hand off to civil engineer Dave LaPointe, to be followed then by the transportation engineer, and then by the project architect. At that point, anyone on the team is available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Chair, members of the board. My name's Nathaniel Bouts with Beals and Thomas, here on behalf of Park House 241 LLC. We are the civil engineers for the project. Yeah, I would first like to make note that we did receive peer review comments and are in the process of addressing those comments. So starting with existing conditions on site. As previously mentioned, the site is located on the west side of Route 9, and is to the west of the intersection of Parkerville and Turnpike Road. The site currently consists of two abandoned buildings, paved parking and driving areas, also existing utility septic systems and minor landscaped areas. There is a wetland to the north and associated buffer zone. The site generally pitches from south to north and discharges in two primary locations, the wetland to the north, and also to existing drainage infrastructure in Parkerville Road. The site preparation sheet depicts the installation of. It also depicts minimal tree clearing to the north as part of the project, the demolition of the two existing buildings on the site, and removal of existing pavement and other site features. The layout and material sheet kind of depicts the proposed project in general. The project involves the construction of a 54,000-square-foot building, two stories, along with off-street parking for 16 automobiles, significant landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, and infrastructure improvements. Two points of access are proposed for the site off of Turnpike Road and Parkerville Road. Vehicular access into the building, the first floor is located off the Parkerville Road site entrance, and for vehicles to access, the second floor of the building is located off of Turnpike Road. Retaining walls are proposed in three locations, along the entrance off of Turnpike Road, along the drive aisle adjacent to Parkerville Road, and also behind the proposed dumpster pad location. The retaining walls were designed with parapets and ornamental fencing for vehicular safety, in addition with wood guard rails and curbing throughout the site. The grating and drainage was designed to match existing terrain where feasible to avoid environmentally sensitive features and minimize impact on existing hydrology. The project reduces impervious area. It provides stormwater treatment and infiltration through water quality structures and two underground infiltration chambers. Infiltration System 1 is located to the west of the site, and that's. And that's collecting stormwater runoff from proposed paved areas and also... The system will outlet the... A flared end that will daylight, a riprap apron, level spreader. Dissipate stormwater. Infiltration System 2, located to the north, will collect stormwater runoff from paved areas that under pre-development conditions was draining to Parkerville Road untreated. The system outlet pipe is proposed to connect to the existing drainage infrastructure in Parkerville Road, consistent with pre-development conditions. Do you need me to start over? Proposed utilities for the project consist of fire and domestic water service and gas connecting the mains in Parkerville Road. A fire hydrant is proposed to the north of the site entrance off of Parkerville Road. And underground electric utilities are proposed to connect to an existing utility pole off of Parkerville Road. For landscape and lighting, the project proposes native trees and shrubs. They're for lighting. The project proposes seven light poles and eight wall-mounted lights. The lights are proposed as dark sky compliant and adhere to the Town of South Borough pole height requirements. And foot candles are depicted on the photometric plan. As shown on the photometric plan, no lights proposed to encroach on abutting property. And no light is proposed... No light is proposed onto the drivable areas for Turnpike Road and Parkerville Road. And that concludes the civil engineering portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the previous PowerPoint? May I... Oh, sorry. Good evening. Thank you for the... Thank you for your time. For the record, my name is Andrew Arsenault, business address 35 New England Business Center Drive in Andover, and I'm representing the Nassan Associates. We performed the transportation impact assessment in support of the project, and tonight I just want to very briefly run through our report's findings and our recommendations. Next slide, please. The two key takeaways from the report are that there were no reported safety deficiencies or a history of crashes recorded in the vicinity of the Route 9-Parkerville Road intersection, and that the project itself is expected to have a minor impact on traffic, resulting in about one additional car every 15 minutes or so during the peak hours. Next slide, please. As far as the trip generation estimates, we base those on the operational characteristics of a similar park house site in Texas. And we built off those to estimate the trips on-site. My mistake, those last two lines should say Saturday daily and Saturday midday peak hour. My apologies for any confusion. As I was saying, we based the trip generation off a similar site and estimated that it would generate around 22 cars per day, two-way in and out on a typical weekday, and about double that on a Saturday. During the morning rush hour, we estimate the site generating about one vehicle, two during the weekday evening rush hour, and about four vehicles during the Saturday midday peak hour. These are all relatively minor traffic volumes and would not be expected to result in a noticeable change to operating conditions along Route 9 during the peak hours or across the day. Next slide, please. Lastly, we have our recommendations, the majority of which are typical to many project sites and were reflected on the plans that were just presented and discussed, with the ultimate intent of all these being to provide and maintain safe and efficient access to and from the site. The one recommendation that I do think is worth calling out tonight is the installation of one-way no-left turn signs along the median at the Route 9 driveway. It's fairly common sense, but we just want to make sure that the official MUTCT regulatory signs are out there to direct traffic at that driveway. Again, like I said, I just wanted to be very brief tonight, so with that, I'll turn over to architecture, but I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's up next? Chad?
Hi. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to review our submission tonight. My name is Chad Woolman. I'm with Balance Architects out of Boston. And is Najah controlling the PowerPoint at the moment? Perfect. There we go. So we'll do a brief overview of some of the architectural items, quite primarily focusing on the exterior elements, just so everyone has an idea of kind of what we're looking to do here. Do we have the PDF with the architectural plans? There we go. Actually, so the first page is a pretty good overview ax on from sort of the backside of the property. You see Route 9 to the top left there. Probably the thing that's pretty important in this view is what we're looking at for rooftop equipment. We've got 32 units. We're looking at using smaller mini splits, kind of per unit, larger air handlers pushed towards the back of the building. And even though these can't be seen in the renderings, they actually are in there, meaning we've got them pretty well placed to minimize any visual impact from outside the site. Here's just brief FAR plans. You know, we use this to go through zoning. They allowed an exemption for the drive aisle, so we're well under the maximum of .6 at only .44. And then the floor plans here, so there's probably a lot more detail in here that we need to go into, but as I mentioned, 16 units. At the top right, we have basically our main lobby that has two accessible bathrooms and elevator for access to the second floor. This floor is actually entered by vehicles on the right side of the plan. There's a garage door there, so vehicles enter on the first floor there. On the second floor, they actually, if you want to scroll to the next page, will actually enter on the left side. So we tried to utilize the existing site topography as best we could, and it actually worked out really well in this case, as it allows vehicle access on two different levels. Roof plan, as I mentioned, you know, we're trying to minimize any visual impact of units, so we pushed our air handling unit behind the larger parapet, and our second one, you know, we're pushing back there. So these are all diagrammatic. Once the MEP team gets in, they'll size them. These are sized basically off similar projects. So they may get smaller, they may get slightly larger, but that's a pretty good estimate of what we're looking at. And elevations. So we've tried to keep the building, you know, pretty simple. We've got some ribbon windows pretty in line with some of the windows you see in adjacent properties. We've got a nearby Cadillac dealership and nearby Rad Exotics, so we've got some different elements going on the site. So we've kept sort of the Route 9 view, you know, pretty simple with windows. We've got, you know, some vertical metal siding and then some split-faced CMU at the bottom. At the main entry, we've done something a little more elegant with a larger glass storefront. And then it looks like wood, but it'll probably be a synthetic material, just because they hold up much better over time and require a lot less maintenance, maybe a Trespa panel or something like that. Additional elevations, showing sort of other sides of the building, again, vertical white metal. You know, you'll see a lot of stepping happening as we kind of go around and follow the topography around the site. Here's one of the renderings from right at the corner of Parkerville and Route 9. So as you can see, you can't see really anything on the roof. You've got kind of, you know, a visual of sort of three different elements, you know, one focusing on the garage entry, one on the lobby, and then the rest on the units with their ribbon windows. And then from a little bit farther up with the second floor entry. You know, again, the way we place the units, we kind of push them away from where they would be highly visible to try to really minimize that, so we really just have a clean kind of building here on the site. And just another view kind of showing that main entry that's really the, sort of the main piece, pulled a little bit away from the road. You'll get a glimpse of it as you drive by, but, you know, it won't be overbearing. The one item probably of note in here is the signage will actually be lower than this. Once we get to that point, we'll pull on a signage vendor to help us get that permitted and get that all, you know, appropriate for zoning. And then just another shot from the back corner. We like to show this one just because even though it's the back corner of the building, you know, we've taken a little bit of effort to still make it, you know, look good no matter where you're seeing it from. And this slide is actually pretty nice. It shows our relationship to adjacent properties. You've got the 225 Turnpike setback, we're a little closer to the road than that, but we're actually farther back than you would be on 251, so we're sitting somewhere there in the middle. So again, just in line with what's around the site. I believe that would be it for architectural.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That would conclude our presentation, so we're very happy to have questions.
Thank you very much. It's a very, very good, very thorough presentation. I appreciate it. Questions, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, thank you. As Mimi said, great presentation and appreciate the detail. It's been a... It's nice to see so thorough a presentation. Excited about something happening at that site. I think I've been in the town since 95, and I've never been in that restaurant because it was closed from when I moved in. So it's very exciting to see that happen there and looking forward to that. So the concept, I think, is really cool. I know a couple people would be probably really interested in it in general, so... And a couple of questions about, I think you said there were, what, 16 parking spots? Is that correct? Someone's going to need to get the mic. So my question is, or first one, is around, so if 32 spots or 32 condos could have up to four cars apiece, if someone's coming with a, you know, meeting a friend there to show things off, or they're going to ride to a rally, or, you know, something like that, assume then that they'd leave their cars parked outside, or they... Help me understand that there's not going to be a parking problem with people coming and taking their specialty car out for the day or whatever with others, and that we're not going to have cars starting lining down Parkerville?
So, correct. During the... Vehicles are obviously entering the building parking in their units. For, there's an outdoor showroom area proposed behind the building for those who want to put their cars on display. And the additional 16 exterior parking spaces are for any events that would be held at the...
So we do also have a sort of pre-agreed-upon lease with across the street, across Parkerville at the office building, that if we ever were to hold an event where like, we're thinking more than just a couple unit owners are going to be there at once, they've agreed because it's going to be after hours, they're not using it for the office, that that can be overflow parking. But our sort of image during the day is you have a few people coming and going, but this isn't like, you know, people, it's not an office people. People are not here all day working. They're sort of coming and going and seeing the cars and leaving, and they can park in their unit, but we have some sort of overflow parking outside if it's needed.
Okay. That helps. But you can see my concern too, right?
For sure.
Okay. So then, the other piece, so the cars, is there going to be requirements that you can't, say, take the car apart and leave it outside in pieces? It's not going to be a, you know...
Shop shop.
Auto repair place? You know, I mean, from what you're displaying, I assume that, but need to state it.
So some of this stuff will have to be addressed in condo docs that obviously don't exist yet, but that's not the look we're going for, and that's not the use we're going for. And either way, I mean, the outside is common area, so if someone takes over and starts using exterior parking for, I don't know, if we're taking a car apart, that's just not what we're going for. And I think it was also addressed with zoning, because they said there's no long-term overnight exterior parking, so some of that will be covered with that requirement, and some of it will just be what we have to put into the condo docs to discourage that sort of behavior.
Okay. No storage of trailers outside either?
There shouldn't be any storage outside. That's sort of why people have their garage unit, so there shouldn't be anything long-term being outside.
You say you shouldn't, but we got it...
Well, again, so we can create rules and...
And I'll tell you why, because when we moved the fire, or the police and fire safety complex to where it is now, there was one of the requirements, like, they couldn't have, like, old vehicles out there that they're working on for long periods of time. They couldn't have trailers out there all the time in one spot, because that's what happened at the old police station. We didn't want that eyesore, you know, being displayed as you drive up 85.
I mean, the whole point is the interior is garages. There's no reason why you should be storing anything outside, so that, again, I know I'm saying should, but like, that's what the condo doc's for.
People I'm sure have trailers for it. They're not going to drive it to certain shows. They're going to trailer them. They might want to just leave the trailer there. Though they might want to do it across the street, where we just approved the storage facility, but, you know, whatever. Little plug there.
Yes.
If they're listening. But, you know, so just trying to make sure, because I do like, what's presented is very neat and clean, and it'd be great. And I think you're trying to attract the clientele that I'm thinking of.
Well, I was going to say also, we're trying to create a brand, right? So it does actually matter to us what the facility looks like and how it's being used. Like, we're not going to build it and run away. Our intention is for this to do well, for us to be able to do it somewhere else, and we're invested in it looking good and sort of operating well.
So I'm not a real engineer for this stuff, but tell me, like, the drainage, so you're going to be storing cars in the facility, right? Oil leaks, antifreeze leaks, stuff like that, what happens? What are you doing for that stuff to catch, to make sure it's not just getting funneled right into the ground?
So there's oil separators that you put sort of between a floor drain and the sewage system. We actually own a property in Waltham right now, and that's exactly what happened. So there, people are working on their cars. I mean, there's stuff leaking out of their cars, and there's basically like a area between where the drains are and where the sewage is that catches the stuff that is not supposed to go into the sewage system.
Yeah, sorry. It's probably helpful for me to hop in here. We haven't onboarded a full MEP engineering team yet, but we'll, you know, we're going to end up being required to have linear drains probably at the entry doors. And then each unit, the code's going to prescribe, you know, floor drain and, as you mentioned, oil-water separator, so we will be providing that in the, you know, the final engineering design.
Okay. And then, um... Let's see. So can you explain to me again, if someone comes with their regular vehicle and they're going to take out their specialty vehicle, are they going to be able to drive it in their regular vehicle into the garage and then leave it in there, like, in the, not in the stall, but inside?
You mean like in the drive aisles?
Yeah, I don't know.
So I don't think the intention, although I don't know if we've fully gotten that far yet, is to have parking inside the building that's not inside the garages, if that makes sense, but for sure, I mean, if they're taking a car out, there's space to put a car in, and the goal would be that, like, your cars live in your garage, whether it's your everyday car or your whatever, like, that's your space to put your vehicles.
And then the ventilation for the building, because the cars, I assume there's going to be clickers to get, open the garage door or something, and it's going to be completely ventilated when cars are coming in and out? How's that work?
Or Chad.
Chad.
Yeah, sorry. I can probably hop in here. Yeah, you know, basically for entry to the, entry to each of these units, they'll, you know, once someone basically owns one of the condos, I believe they'll have a, basically a key fob, or, yeah, clicker has actually a better name for it. But basically to open doors, you know, we've got several overhead doors on, on different sides that can open for additional ventilation. And then, you know, once we have the MEP team involved, they'll be providing mechanical ventilation as well, which is part of the, part of the reason our rooftop units, we have two large units up there at the moment. But yeah, our, our floor plans stacked exactly on top of each other. So our drive aisles are exactly stacked on top of each other. So exhausting those will be a little bit easier specifically versus the units.
And last question, snow storage. Where are you gonna store snow?
We do have spaces and a little bit of a buffer between the property line and the proposed paved areas. We definitely think that would be a condition more to add to the plans to depict the snow storage areas on the plans.
Sorry, say it again?
We, we are currently, you know, using the areas beyond the parking, between the parking and the property line for snow storage. We would definitely, any iterations going forward on the plans, we could add snow storage areas to the plans.
So I'll let Mimi ask, because I know she will, about the plantings that are gonna be in the same area, what's gonna happen to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
I'm kind of curious about that. The landscaping, that's where the snow storage is now? Is that?
Dave, would you like to touch on the landscaping?
Relative to the snow storage?
Yes. For the record, my name is Dave Lapointe, also with Beals &amp; Thomas. So as Nate just mentioned, the intent is to, during the winter months, be able to push snow off of the pavement into this area, just to the side of the curb. In this particular location here, we just have trees. So there's space in between the trees where snow could get pushed. There are some other larger lawn areas where snow could be distributed. And then if it gets to a point where there's so much snow over the course of a winter, maybe there's an opportunity where the owners basically hire somebody to, to plow and then remove it from the site and dispose of it other, other places. But the area around the build, or around the back of the building here, that's also an area available for snow storage. No plantings in that particular area. And that area would likely not be used for any parking of vehicles during the winter months. So that would be available for use as well.
What are those lines in the area you just were referencing?
It's just basically shown to indicate that it's not the drive aisle. It's, we've been calling it partly the loading area, but also a display area. As was mentioned, the membership club may occasionally have some kind of an event where maybe the local high-end car dealer brings the latest model here, and they park it out here for the owners to come and take a look at it, and maybe, you know, take it for a ride, or whatever they may do. But that's the intent. Is that just kind of a temporary parking area for display of vehicles on occasion?
So are all 32 units the same?
Variations on a theme. Oh, here, Chad can answer better.
Sorry. I was gonna say, they're, they're not identical. We attempted to get them as close as we could to all be, you know, the same size, but also with, you know, dealing with the site constraints, and then having a, you know, a certain dimension for our drive aisle. So I think maybe 30 of them are almost identical in size, and then there's a couple of larger ones. But, you know, there are some that don't have windows directly to the outside that may cater to a group that has a car that they really don't want to get natural daylight on, because it's more of a collector's item, but they want to keep, you know, pristine and out of the sun as much as possible, whereas some of these other ones have windows. So they're, they're pretty much the same in terms of size, but they, they do vary slightly.
So each of those units holds up to six cars? Is that correct?
I believe it was four cars.
I'm asking, does it, now it says six per unit.
I believe, I believe it's four, up to four cars per unit.
Okay. So it says on the PowerPoint, up to six cars per unit. It's four. Is that correct?
The only ones that might be bigger are those ones at the very, like, top of the drive aisle, but even
Okay. I'm just trying to, like, reconcile the traffic estimates, because, you know, like, when I initially was looking at this PowerPoint, I was figuring there'd be about 190 cars in the building at optimal use.
There may be. I think the idea, though, is, you know, four to six of them at a time belong to one person. So you're never driving all of your cars at once. It's sort of, you bring one in, you take one out. They mostly live there.
Hmm. So, okay. So can we just go back to the traffic and kind of revisit that? I'm trying to find it. Thanks. So if there's 190 cars, let's say hypothetically, that's optimal use for the site, there's only 11 cars entering daily? Is that? Can you just kind of like, explain that, or?
Sure.
How can quantify that somehow?
Sure. So how we, we, we got the operational characteristics from a similar site. I, I do believe it was a parkhouse branded, but it was the same concept, a vehicle, high-end vehicle storage garage. And yes, there's going to be more cars in there when they're loading it that may happen once. I don't know how long the leases will be, but say it happens once a year that those four cars come in, on the day-to-day basis, they're, they're going to be sitting in there. They're not every day coming out, going back in. The owner may come and visit every other day, every three days on average. So it's not like, yes, there's more cars on the site, but there's not active trips associated with those on a typical day.
And at your other sites, the people just enter the garage, enter the actual building, park in their own unit, visit their collectible, so to speak, and then exit? That's how this works?
So to clarify, the, the one in Texas is actually Garages of Texas. That's not us. But it, it's a very similar concept. They have them in South Florida also. This is our first one. So we, we've visited a bunch. We've done our research, but this, I can't speak to specifically how those operate.
Okay.
Yes. They would come in and they would, they would come in, stay for a few hours, and then, and then leave, likely in the same car they arrived in.
All right. At what point, Karina, in the process, would the applicant have applied for the demolition permit on the existing structures?
Are they historical structures?
I don't know.
They're not.
I have no idea.
At what point are they supposed to
Have the demo permit.
Have the demo permit?
Yeah.
I think prior, soon as you want to take ac, before you want to take action on demoing, you'll have to submit a permit to the building department.
Yeah. It's been a while since I remember something to be raised in a submission here. So it's just, I don't recall if it's supposed to be something
It's like a building permit. It's like part of that process.
It's not part of our packet.
No. They would have to go take care of that first before they go actually with a building permit, or maybe the initial part of that stage.
Did that. Okay. Operating hours. So it's great that you guys have a nice photometric. When are the lights gonna be on? And when is, when are your tenants going to be entering and leaving the site?
So, I apologize. So what I would say is it's a little bit to be determined, but I, if there's any direction we need to be given on when they are allowed to be on and not allowed to be on, we can definitely take that direction. And, I mean, I can't imagine, actually, we can say, you don't, you know, midnight is not a time where you come and visit your cars. It's sort of, I imagine most of the activity will be first thing in the morning, and mostly sort of afternoon to evening, but it's, we haven't fully defined it, but we can and happy to be reasonable with the hours that we're selecting.
So back to the overflow, excuse me, parking for a moment. Where is the overflow parking?
So right next door to 25? I think it's 225.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. So they just have to walk across Parkerville? That works. Is that it for me?
Can I just add whose parking lot is again? Or is that the overflow parking lot?
The office building at 225.
I'm sorry. I asked, who, who owns the overflow, overflow parking area you're proposing?
Yeah. So it's the office building that's right across Parkerville from us.
What's that address? Do you know?
225 Turnpike Road.
And I would just recommend that you check their site plan approval, because they're allocated certain amount of spaces for their site. And if they're promising you spaces there that aren't above and beyond that, you will run into a problem.
Yeah. I think the intention is to be using the spaces, like, during the day, the office tenants are using it, and in the evenings, like, we'd be taking over the same spaces they already use.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, Jesse, just as an addendum to what you were asking.
Thank you. So part of the site is in a residential district?
Yes. The top, the, the northwest corner. He's, Nathaniel's pointing it out right there. There's a zone line right there. You'll see it on the
I tend to be a stickler about these things. So do we have any comment from town council as to whether or not there's any issue with that? Do we need to have some kind of zoning change on the site, or?
I think there's no improvement proposed on that corner within that residential zone. All the improvement is happening in the business highway zone.
Okay.
That's my opinion. If we want confirmation, I can always ask town council.
So I think, and thank you for answering all my questions, I think that the two things that are still kind of lingering for me personally are the traffic and the operating hours. It's a little fuzzy right now. But that's okay. First night. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you. Thank you for the really good presentation and being so prepared. So my first question, C31 is the only site plan that I saw, the layout and material plan that had parking. So there are 10 spaces that are indicated as eight feet by 22, and our parking regulations are nine and a half by 18, and I didn't see a waiver for those. And those are the ones that are in parallel to Route 9?
Yes. So the perpendicular spaces were sized for South Borough regulations. For the parallel parking spaces, they require, you know, different dimensions for that movement. You know, obviously they're a lot longer to kind of make that turning radius. So that's why they were proposed at eight feet and 22 feet.
Okay. And what my point is, is I didn't see a waiver request for those.
Yep.
Are you saying that you calculated the area of those spaces based on that 300, there's a certain ratio of area to number of spaces you have to have to provide that number of spaces? In other words, and when you don't have perpendicular parking, there may be, I just read it right here, because I can't think of it off the top of my head. Because I looked at town code, I didn't see that it was a calculation, but I could be wrong. And just to visit that really quickly while we're here, each space will be nine and a half by 18, exclusive of aisles. The width of the aisle should not be less than 22 feet. I'm assuming that aisle is at least 22 feet.
24 feet, yep.
24 feet. And then it says for angle or herringbone parking and one-way circulation, the width of aisle should be consistent with dimension recommended by the ITE, provided that for parking facilities, more than five cars, the total area, so provided that for parking facilities for more than five cars, the total area shall be not less than 300 square feet times the number of parking spaces.
So I do not have that calculation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Had you, had you right now, Mike, you definitely
So you might have to just prepare to answer that
Sure. Yep.
Next time.
Great. Thank you. So outdoor illumination. So in May of '21, we amended our bylaw, and that's 174-12.1. And you are an LZ3 lighting zone, which gives you five lumens per square foot of hardscape. And I couldn't find the hardscape number in any of the documents, so I didn't know if that was available. And so what we now require is, with the photometric plan, I did see some light trespass. We, we are pretty, even though it's on Route 9 and on Parkerville public roadways, we still are sticklers for our photometric plan not having light trespass. But your total lumens allowed is basically five times, five lumens per square foot of hardscape. So it's a, it's a calculation, and it's within the outdoor illumination bylaw. So I would just need you to update your photometric plan to provide that calculation, and just confirm that your LEDs would not be north of 3,000 Kelvin, which all of your lighting plan that you provided met all the requirements of our outdoor illumination, because we did have a dark sky initiative bylaw that was approved. And you had the bug rating. So you had everything I needed except for the kind of the component of the calculation of the square foot by hardscape.
But there is, in terms of what you first mentioned, sorry.
Yes.
In terms of the light trespass into roadways, that actually is allowed, I believe, by the zoning bylaw? Or maybe it's in the, one of those bylaws says that the trespass is allowed to go into the right-of-ways?
On Route 9? I guess so. Is Parkerville, is that also? That's a scenic roadway. Is that allowed?
Into public, right, public roadways.
Public right-of-ways.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can have light trespass.
Yeah.
I'm not used to it. I think there, there is exemption for light trespass onto public roadways. However, you still need to have the proper correlated color temperature. And I don't think that just because it says you can push some light over it, you, you know, you have to be, it has to be reasonable.
Right, right. We acknowledge that we need to get you that calculation, certainly, but we just, in terms of move, potentially having to move poles around, we just wanted to verify that we can let the light trespass into the right-of-ways. And I believe our poles, our fixtures are 3,000 Kelvin.
Yeah. It looked like you had all the cap, like, you could choose that, and then I would just require that it can't go north of 3,000 Kelvin on that based on our new bylaw?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. So there, on, on your letter to us, this, this document, the brief, section three, the use, which is paragraph two for proposed use, you said, "The units may also be used to house other collections, prints such as art, and may be used for personal use by owners such as personal office and visiting space, but not to include residential use or business." So I know that Andrew, Mr. Mills, raised, like, what can people actually do in there? And so I think we'll need to kind of refine exactly what the utilization will be. And to that point, I recognize that each will be temperature or climate control. Will they all have electricity and also access to Wi-Fi, so you could almost have like an office in there?
Yes, for sure, for electricity. And yeah, I mean, people will be able to get internet access there if they want it.
Okay. So I guess for both operating hours and use, I think we'll need to kind of have a better definition of what that would, what that would mean.
Sure.
And we, we obviously don't want any weird stuff going on in there. So we like to protect our public. And then you also said, and you've talked about it, on page three, you said, "Parkhouse is working on securing off-site parking," so you have that. And I just was asking for, like, explain, like, when it says for, it says any large events, what would you, how would you define a large event?
So the vision is, let's say, once a month, we have a reason to hopefully attract most, if not all, of the owners. most, if not all, of the owner, owners, unit owners to come. So rather than on a regular day where, I don't know, two to five people show up on a given day, we'd be expecting to really see 30 unit owners and maybe a guest each. And we recognize that 16 exterior parking spaces are not gonna cut it for everyone showing up at one time. Um, so it would be, you know, a monthly Cars and Coffee, or it would be something where they have a reason to all show up at the same time.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, uh, page four, and you also provided an emergency access the vehicle. So it would look like, like a fire truck could drive into the right, but then it would have to back up the whole way, right? There would be no turning radius, or, or would there be? I guess this is where we would need the police chief to kind of comment on that. It was the auto turn exhibit.
Yep.
I just couldn't see that it could turn around if it was a ladder truck in there.
So, correct, you, uh, were mentioning the, the turn?
Yeah, going in on the right side, yes.
Yep, so this, this exhibit does show, you know, the movement as a full backup. Um, we did run simulations of, you know, turning movements through here, which would require slightly more than a three-point turn for the ladder truck. Um, but, yeah, we are currently, you know, shown in this exhibit, uh, a backup movement to get out of that site.
So that's something I think our police chief should make a comment. I don't know if they want to back up a ladder truck, but.
And, uh, sorry, early on in the process as well, we did meet with the fire department-
Oh, good.
-to review this plan. It wasn't quite in the same state that it is today, but it was pretty similar with only just that one access to the backside of the building, and I think the comment was that he was fine with it. Obviously, that, we would hope to get a written, um, response to the filing, but, um, the initial reaction was that he was fine.
Great. Thanks for doing the diligence and having the conversation. Most people don't do that.
And I do recommend that you provide that document from the fire chief, a memo or a letter indicating what you said, so we can put it in the file and have record of.
And then my last comment was similar to Mr. Stein around operating hours. And I think since you've done your diligence in Texas and really tried to understand what do they do, I think it'd be good to know. Um, I think we would prefer not to have a 24-hour access. We would like to have it limited. Um, part of our illumination bylaw, as well as the dark sky initiative, is you would like to have some automation on your lights on/off, so not on all night long, um, particularly on the exterior of the building.
I was gonna ask, I guess this is not quite the same as the automation with the timer, but if we said after a certain time, the lights are off, but if someone pulls in, it triggers a light just for them to pull in, does that sort of satisfy requirements, or just?
It does, yes. And I think what we would require is just an understanding of what you would propose, and then we would talk about it and either accept that or make other recommendations.
Perfect.
So, that's all I had. Ms. Lutrell, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's so nice to see this site getting some love. As Andrew said, I don't think it, there's been anything going on there since, uh, I've been here. Um, it's great to see the native plants, most of them. There were some cultivars in there, the dogwoods, if we can get those straight native, that would be preferred. Um, in our, um, LED, LID, um, bylaw, it asks that there are, um, LID techniques that are integrated into the design, um, vegetated open channels, rain gardens, buffer strips, roof garden, uh, bio-retention areas. Are there any of those techniques being utilized?
I, um, do not have the LID application, uh, with me, but I know we did prepare a report, um, kind of listing out all the LID techniques utilized. So, you know, as far as the, uh, low-impact development, minimal tree clearing is being used, um, kind of matching existing terrain where feasible, uh, we are reducing impervious on-site, which I know is a LID requirement. Um, and, uh, for stormwater, we're providing the, uh, pre-treatment that is needed before any stormwater leaving the site.
Okay. So there, um, if you look at our bylaw, there's specific techniques called out, and, uh, you don't have to answer that now, but for next time.
Yep.
Um, so the site plan requires that all, uh, trees six-inch caliper or more identified on the plan, and I see two. Is that true? There are only two on that site? There's one in the driveway off of Route 9, and then one by Parkerville, are the only two that I see identified.
Correct. So, the one, uh, eight-inch tree located off of Parkerville is on the Locust site.
So none of, none of the, the planting along, uh, that's along Route 9 now, none of those trees are six-caliper or greater? And none of the, in the back?
Um, nothing currently identified on the existing conditions plan.
So, identified, does that mean there aren't any trees that are?
Survey, survey located.
Okay, so what, does that mean there weren't put on the plan, or there are no, they are not six-inch caliper or greater?
Um, I do not want to make an assumption, uh, for the, you know, obviously, the, uh, survey was done by niche engineering. Um, they do show one eight-inch tree, you know, off of Parkerville Road, and, yeah, so, um, assuming that they're showing that one tree.
There may be, there may be some larger trees.
You know, Mike. There, there may be some larger trees, six inches or larger, but they, along Route 9, but they're likely in the right-of-way, they're not on the property.
Okay.
So, so that might be, if that's what you're referring to, that's probably, um, like I said, not on the property, but on, in the right-of-way, on the Route 9 property.
Okay, so those, so those are going to remain?
Uh, I think that's the intent, is that they would try, we would keep those there, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yep.
Um, and along the, the northern, um, portion of the lot, it says proposed tree line? So, there's a landscape, a 20-foot landscape buffer required there, but if there's already, uh, there are already mature trees there, that certainly would count, but we need to know that the existing trees there are gonna remain and not just a proposal?
Right, so. Yep, so, um, yeah, the limit of work, the tree line, the sedimentation control barrier, all proposed outside of the 20-foot buffer zone, so no work is going to be proposed within that buffer zone or impact the wetland.
Okay. I would want something more definitive on the, the plan.
Hmm?
Um, under the, um, your notes in the beginning, under planting number two, I would like added that, um, substitutions shall be approved by town planner. Okay, and this, I think, we talked about, so, the outdoor showroom is if someone wants to air out their car for an afternoon or something, or leave it there, can it be there? Is that part of the long-term parking?
No, no, it's more, you know, if there's an event and a local car dealership is bringing their car, they will also be able to pull a car into the clubhouse, but if the weather's nice and they want to be able to have the car outside to sort of display something for an event, that would be the use. It's not just sort of a parking space.
Okay. Um, and to continue on, I think, with what, uh, Mr. Mills brought up, what kind of work on the cars would be allowed on the outside?
So, not on the outside. The whole point is that, that's why they have their units.
Okay. And is there gonna be any kind of soundproofing from the?
I may leave that to Chad. I don't know if he has an answer to that. I think you're on mute, Chad.
Because I don't know that much about cars, but fancy cars can have loud engines.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think the plan at the moment is, you know, we have some pretty heavy-duty exterior walls, they're gonna require insulation, so we're gonna, by default, the exterior walls have a certain level of sound dampening anyway. Um, we're also looking at between units, um, the current wall assemblies are to help mitigate sound transfer between units as well. So there'll be, you know, some, some pretty good, um, things in place to mitigate the sound from inside this building from escaping out. You know, there's, there's always, obviously, the, as a door opens, if somebody's driving a car, when the door opens, right, we have the same result if somebody were to do it outside or something, but, um, as far as when the, you know, the doors are closed, you know, I think we can pretty well contain a lot of the sound.
Yeah, would they be allowed to rev the engines outside?
So, this sort of, again, falls into, we haven't fully put condo docs together yet, but these are the kind of rules that I think we can easily put in without impacting people's ability to enjoy the space. Um, it's not unreasonable in a, you know, a space where we have residential not far away to say, you know, this is not a racetrack, this is not where you're revving your engines, and it's where you park your cars, or you take them out to go drive them wherever you're gonna drive them.
Okay, and then hours, I think we talked about. Um, that's all I have. Is there anyone in the public that has a question?
Yes, hi there. So we, we live pretty close by to this, uh, particular property, and we're concerned-
Uh, just, could you just identify your name and?
Uh, this is Ritesh Sethi, uh, and my wife, Rachana Sharma. We live pretty close by to this property, in fact, we can-
And what's your address? So just, we have relative orientation?
One John Matthews Road.
What number?
One John Matthews Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can view this property from our house. It's pretty evident that, you know, there is definitely gonna be quite a bit of commotion happening with a lot of cars coming in and out. I saw the presentation, really nice touch with all the information, but I'm very concerned, especially about learning about the events that are gonna happen, that are gonna be monthly, and the overflow parking for that. So, it kind of gives me a little bit of, uh, you know, what do you say? Not, not a lot of confidence that there's gonna be a lot of security, there's gonna be a lot of kind of like control for these things, and I could be wrong, I'm just being very concerned, being a resident of Southborough, and, you know, all of this information is new coming to us, right? So, so we'd love to hear more on how we can control that, and if there is gonna be guardrails gonna be put around it by the town itself. Uh, the timing piece is concerning, eh, that, the fact that the property owner doesn't know what the timing is gonna be. If it's gonna be a 24-hour thing, that concerns me. I have a little kid, I have, uh, you know, a job to go to in the morning, and also, you know, my wife is working full-time, so we need to be, like, pretty confident about these things. Uh, we can't have engines being revved up close to our house, where we've spent a lot of money and taxes for the town. So, uh, these are, there's very high-level concerns that have come up after listening to what, you know, the Parkhouse team has presented to us. So, I rambled on, but I'll, I'll take a quick pause over here.
Thank you. Can you speak to the, um, monthly events?
Sure, I mean, my vision there is, let's say, on a Saturday afternoon, the, I don't know if you've ever been to, like, Lars Anderson, I mean, that's obviously a different scale, but, you know, car owners come, they hang out together, they talk about their cars for a couple hours, and then they all go home, and that's sort of my vision. We're not talking sort of late nightclub party atmosphere, it's like, you get together in an afternoon, um, that's when I sort of see the majority of the, I guess, the busiest time at the property. Um, I'd love to understand a little bit more about what your concern is with security, because I, I, I'm happy to address if there are any specific questions there. Um, one other thing, I don't know if this matters or helps, but the traffic engineers had recommended, which we're totally happy to do, that it's right-turn only out of our property onto Parkerville, so that no one is sort of bleeding into the residential part of the neighborhood, that it really is keeping everything along Route 9 and in and out on that side of the property. Um, but yeah, I mean, the, we, we really, I'm serious about the fact that we want to be good neighbors, and we're happy to work with neighbors and work with concerns to meet any, yeah, to meet or talk about any concerns that you may have. But as I said, the security thing I'd love to hear more about, because I, I mean, security is gonna be important to us, too, people are gonna have pretty high-value items in there, and I, I'd, I'd just like to hear what the concern is.
Yeah, more from a security perspective, I, I think it's more like, like, hey, who's gonna control stuff over there if things get slipped by? Like, is there gonna be someone over there gonna be telling someone that, hey, you can't rev up your engine? I, I'm sure there are gonna be signs up there, but, uh, I hope people abide by those also, right? Uh, but if that happens continuously, then that's more around, hey, is there gonna be more action taken around that? I hope so. Uh, but that's kind of like where my security concern comes from. It's more about that aspect, um, rather than being like, oh, there's gonna be break-ins and stuff, which I don't know. Like, I hope not, right? When there are certain high-value cars over there, there's gonna be ample cameras and everything over there also, so.
Sure. So, um, okay, so it's more about sort of managing the unit owners. So, for what it's worth, our history is actually property management. That's what we do, that's our primary business right now. So we own a couple office buildings, we own a property in wall fam that is also garage units that were condoized and selling off, and we, I'd say, I don't feel like I know a ton about development right now, but I do actually know a lot about property management and about, you put rules in place and you do enforce them, and whether that means, it's a little different with condos, but if people are consistently breaking condo rules, like, they can't be a condo member anymore, and that, that's all stuff that we do pretty much every day, dealing with, whether it's office tenants or these condo and wall fam owners. So I, I can't promise you no one's ever gonna be breaking rules, because they're gonna be breaking rules. That's sort of just how people are, but we absolutely know how to manage tenants, um, and condo owners. Thank you.
What details can you share around managing, then? If someone is breaking rules, is there gonna be like a security person over there, or is there gonna be something that you're gonna take action? Would love to hear a little bit of a plan around that.
Sure, so the, the intention is to have somebody on-site, um, because there is gonna be a reasonable amount of, you know, a condo owner wants to get their something fixed, or there, there, there's gonna be enough sort of admin that needs to happen, um, also, hopefully to help with the monthly events and all of that sort of stuff. So there, there will be somebody who's on-site a lot, who can deal with any day-to-day problems. And as I said, I mean, part of the process of creating a condo is that you create condo docs, and there are consequences for breaking the rules of the condo, whether it's not paying your condo fees or being in a nuisance to your neighbors. Um, and we, we do and will have the ability to say, you can't be a member here anymore. If you're, it's a problem for all of us if our neighbors start hating us. So we, we wanna do our best to, to be good neighbors, um, and that means enforcing the rules, creating the rules and enforcing the rules, that we're not a nuisance to the people around us.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thanks for that, uh, you know, explanation. Uh, you know, it's still very concerning overall, that, you know, there's gonna be quite a lot of traffic coming in and out of this. I, I saw the numbers that were shared. Those are obviously projected, things can be pretty higher or lower, right? Um, the event piece is concerning, still, for me, I get it, it's still on the weekend, still, you know, I like to enjoy my house in the weekend, and I don't want to see a bunch of cars outside my house running around, revving up their engines, uh, or having an event or playing music. Uh, that's not my idea of a weekend, sorry about that, if it is for someone else. So, um, concerns me still. I don't know if that's something that's been approved by, by the town already. Uh, I had not heard about it before, but that's something new information for me, maybe I missed that information earlier. Um, I feel like it degrades the value of my property, uh, and if I have to, you know, think about it from that angle, then, then it kind of like puts me in a little bit of a tough spot, uh, as a- Uh, as a resident of Southborough, I would love to be in this, you know, neighborhood and enjoy it. So, so these are things like, uh, like I'm still processing. So I don't know, the town, if someone has more perspective around these pieces from the town.
This is a new use to us too, and this is the first hearing, so we're working our way through and hopefully all these, uh, questions, uh, can be answered as we move through. Mr. Stein?
Hi. Are you, are you aware that there's two elementary schools just in the north of this site? There's already a lot of traffic on Parkerville.
Is that, is that a question for me?
No.
No.
I'm asking the proponents, sir.
Okay.
So, I mean, I have, I have two children that are that age and I think that the timing of when the traffic happens for elementary school and the timing of trapping, traffic would happen for here, which again, I think will be quite limited, but it's just, it, I don't think there'll be any overlap really. It's the, schools are sort of 8:00 AM and maybe 2:00 to 3:00 PM. And I, I think for the most part, these are people who are going to be even like afternoons and weekends kind of a thing.
So there's, is there entrance and egress on Parkerville?
Yes.
Okay. Do, what, do you guys have a plan B in case we say, you know what? We want you to have entrance and egress strictly off of, off and on a turnpike?
Yeah, do you mind just going to the one that actually shows the driveway? Yeah. So, I mean, this is not our first choice, but this is actually on site. So you can drive in on Route 9 and, you know, drive down to the first floor or you could drive in on Parkerville and come in or drive up to the second floor. So there is, you can access both floors from on the site as well as on Route 9. So again, I think for usability, we for sure want to have access both on Route 9 and on Parkerville, but you can actually sort of travel around the property from either side, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I'm empathetic to the, uh, butters' concerns and, um, I just, my, from my perspective, I would have to think about this. Thanks.
Kids, yeah. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, you know, I'm concerned about the kids as well who are running and walking around, uh, going to school, coming back from school, cycling, you know, all those activities happen over here. I, in spite of Parkerville being a busy road itself, uh, you know, we don't, obviously don't want to jeopardize safety of everyone who's walking around, who's on the bikes, especially in the summertime, right? So, and when, and that's especially when the events are going to happen too. So.
Mr. Trell?
I'm raising these concerns as, as, you know, since I, I'm, we live over here, so.
Okay, thank you for your concerns.
Mr. Trell?
Just a recommendation to the proponents. So you're going to do a little diligence. So I would recommend just collecting information around when they do events, what happens, what is the traditional times and events. Personally, having participated in some of these things, I do know it's nights and weekends. And, uh, hours are, are just different and it's not, um, generally these type of events are for luxury car owners and it's just not, um, it, it's not drag racing and it's not a motorcycle gang. So, um, it's just a very different clientele. So, um, but I would recommend the diligence report and just call places around. I think that would help support the butters' concerns as well as answer any of our concerns. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in the, uh? We're going to be the fancy car auto mile.
We hope so.
Okay, so are we ready to?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 241, 245 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval and 241, 245 Turnpike Road, uh, special permit, lower impact development to February 27th, 2023 at 7:05 PM. Yes?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Good job. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. See you in a couple weeks.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is continuation of a public hearing, 200 Turnpike Road. Karina, can you bring us up to date?
Okay, to bring everyone up to speed for 200 Turnpike Road, um, a contractor's facility, uh, the major site plan approvals and LID special permit, uh, application. Uh, the last public hearing was on January 23rd, 2023. It was continued to this evening. An extension request was granted, um, in order to do that. Let's see, uh, we received, shortly after the last public hearing, we received, um, a revised submission from engineering design consultants, Peter Bemis, uh, plans to say, just dated January 24th, uh, 2023. Submission was distributed, uh, to town departments, um, and to Fussin O'Neill for review. Uh, we received comments back from Fussin O'Neill. It was, um, their final review letter. In it were, I believe, five or six, um, remaining comments that were to be determined at the discretion of the planning board. They included waivers, et cetera. On January 26th, Conservation Commission approved the stormwater management permit and issued an order of conditions for the notice of intent. Uh, that's per, uh, Conservation Agent Melissa Danza. Uh, this, we received an extension request for this evening in case the, um, public hearing needs to continue since the deadline is February 10th. In the interim, I prepared a dra- draft decision with conditions. Um, it's represented in a major site plan approval decision, uh, but basically the LID decision will be similar. Practice right now is to put the conditions the same in both permits so that nothing is missed and everything's the same. So the conditions that are listed in that decision, um, is something, uh, we could review this evening. The decision was, um, submitted to the applicant, um, Jonathan Crandall and Peter Bemis, with the engineering firm representing the project. Uh, so I think there was, that was it. And just recall, there was a letter from the DCR, um, indicating that they were, um, appreciative of, um, being able to review the project and had one, uh, comment that they would like included in the decision for a comment, uh, for a condition. So we can get to that if we go through the conditions.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Bemis. Welcome.
Yes, good evening. Thank you.
Would you like to start us off or should we just get to it?
Uh, well, I provided you with the updated drawings and responded to the, uh, the few comments that were left from Fussin O'Neill. And as, uh, Karina has indicated, uh, we are basically down to the waivers that we had requested of the board, uh, for the project. So, um, I look forward to your support and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. I did review the draft decision Karina had put together and, and we're fine with that, um, as it's, uh, laid out. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
No, no questions.
Mr. Stein?
No questions.
Ms. Houlihan?
No questions.
Mr. Maria?
Hi, no questions.
Very good. So we should start with talking about the waivers, I guess.
Uh, with the waivers? Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Now let me go blind. I'm going deaf. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry. Um, okay, so we have, um, and again, I combined all the waiver requests into this document and, um, this week, um, they'll be put into two separate decision documents, one for the site plan and one for the LID. Uh, but again, the other stuff is administrative. It's these waivers and the conditions that need to be, um, basically voted on for approval. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six waivers. And, um, the last waiver has to do with the hydrogeological assessment. And I didn't see, and, and then we can go through the rest of the waivers, but that's the one waiver, um, that I don't believe I saw a request for that, but I also didn't see the technical information to support that. So, um, when we get to that waiver, Peter, maybe you can address that. Okay, so the first waiver. Uh, should I keep, I should keep going, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the first waiver is from zoning 174-10B2B13. Existing trees on site with a caliper of six inches or larger must be shown on the plans. Uh, the applicant indicated there's little to no value to provide this detail as all forms of vegetation within the work limit will be, will require removal. The site plan provides a tree clearing limit which Fussin O'Neill believes is sufficient. All trees and associated vegetation beyond the identified work limit shall be retained regardless of caliper species. As requested, several larger trees have been surveyed and included on the site plan.
Are there any questions on the board or comments regarding this waiver request? Okay, next.
Waiver from Section 3.6.6 of the Rules and Regs for LID Special Permits, pre and post-development topography and one-foot contours shall be provided. The site, the site plan showed two-foot contours with spot grades where required, which Fussin O'Neill, the engineering consultant, um, reviewing consultant indicated, appears to be sufficient to ensure proper grading.
Are there any questions from the board on this waiver request? Okay, very good. Next.
Waiver number three from Section 367 of the Rules and Regulations for LID Permits, that's 3.6.7, contours of maximum groundwater elevation showing a sufficient number of test pits and test information to demonstrate reasonable accuracy of groundwater contour lines. The applicant indicated that sufficient information is provided with the test pit information and with the increase in fill on the site, there is nothing further to be gained by creating a groundwater contour map to which Fussin O'Neill agreed there are sufficient number of test pits completed on site to show groundwater elevation.
Any questions from the board on this? Very good. Thank you. Next.
Waiver from 3.11 of the Rules and Regs of the LID Special Permit, a yearly hydrologic budget of water balance calculation of pre and post-development conditions on the site must be provided. The applicant indicated due to scale and scope of the project, there will be little effect on the regional or even immediate site limits water budget as the site has been designed to provide collection, treatment and recharge of stormwater.
Any questions on the board on this?
Uh, waiver from Section 3.15.1, one of the Rules and Regulations for LID Special Permits, the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation in the areas to be used for stormwater retention, detention or infiltration. The applicant indicated having good correlation with the soil testing completed to date. Test pit information is provided, however, test pits were not completed in the location of the proposed stormwater BMPs, best management practices. Fussin O'Neill felt there are sufficient test pits to show groundwater elevation on site.
Any questions with this one?
And the last waiver was the one I mentioned at first, a waiver from Section 3.12 of the Rules and Regulations for LID Special Permits, Hydrogeological Assessment. And we would just need a, um, backup from Mr. Bemis on why this waiver should be granted.
Right, and so, so this is very similar to the fourth waiver and I, I thought our cover letter had indicated this, Karina, so I'm sorry that we didn't discuss that earlier today when we spoke. Uh, because 3, 3.11 is the item just before this one, it's 3.12, um, which pertains to the, um, the water budget and basically the hydrologic study. So they, they go hand in hand. And being a small, small site in a, in a very, uh, large watershed, um, it really does not, um, there, there's, I, I know why you have this provision in the bylaw and, and again, I would respect the request for it on a larger-scale project. On this small-scale project where we're actually infiltrating 100% of our stormwater, we're actually doing everything we're supposed to do. It's just to do that kind of larger, big picture assessment makes little sense. So I believe our language in our cover letter said something similar regarding 3.12. And I'm sorry that, um, I didn't, I can't pull up my cover letter right now because I don't have it in front of me. Um, this goes back to our original submission, however. So if you'll accept those words, then I would, uh, be grateful if you would, um, see to it to grant this waiver, but it's very similar to 3.11.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this? Any questions from anyone in the public on the waiver requests? Any hands raised? Anyone in Zoom land, if you have a question, raise your hand? I don't see any.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, grant the waivers requested by the applicant for 220 Turnpike Road, a snow removal landscaping facility as reviewed today on, what did I say? 200, oh, sorry, 200 Turnpike Road, uh, snow removal. Um, as requested today, February 6th, um, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Very good.
Um, so there's two ways to do this. We can say, um, just simply, you know, because, um, we can simply say, condition number one, does anyone have any questions? Or I can read them all. We can put them up on the, on the, on the board. If it's just as easy, I can read them, but, um, it might save some time. I can discuss some of the general. Okay. So, um, again, I just want to reiterate that these conditions are for both the LID Special Permit and Major Site Plan Approval, that they'll be identical in both decisions. Um, and I do have some notes from, for a couple of additional conditions, um, on comments I received. So, um, the first three conditions are, um, very standard boilerplate conditions that, um, correspond to, um, that all approve, the, uh, the approved plans and submittals must be adhered to and any permits from other boards adhere to as well. And that, um, the applicant shall, um, pay all fees for anything required during construction to show compliance, which, um, the third condition indicates that, uh, specifically that the town's engineering consultant will provide construction phase services during construction. So there'll be a request for a cost estimate, um, for when construction is going to start so that we can have interim inspections, um, so that there are no concern, major concerns at the end when it's time to get the AS build. Condition number four. So does it, does anybody have any questions on those first three administrative? Okay, so conditions, uh, number four and five have to do with lighting. Um, they're the standard one-year, um, timeframe, um, based on when we're notified that the installation is complete, that the planning unit has time to review and also that, um, the exterior mounted light fixtures, um, as part of the project will be controlled by an internal time clock which can be programmed by the owner. Any questions on those? Okay. The sixth condition is regarding landscaping, that, um, the lands, the, uh, landscaping shall be conforming with the landscape plans as submitted by the applicants and approved as part of this process and that they need to be maintained for the project. process, and that they need to be maintained for the project, and that planting materials be 100% straight native species to New England cultivars, not, will not be used, and any substitutions for plants that die shall, or any substitutions shall be approved by the town planner prior to installation. Any questions on those?
I have one comment, I would just put substitutions to replace plants that die, it just sounds better. Anybody else?
To replace plants that die, that will substitute... Oh, yeah. Okay. Seven, condition seven, eight, nine, and 10 are standard boilerplate conditions for the requirement to set, before, prior to the lapse of the appeal period, two sets of the final approved plans to be provided for planning board endorsement. The major site plan approval decision shall be recorded to the registered deeds with a set of the plans attached as an exhibit. The special perm, I mean, for the major site plan, just be the, the decision, for the LID in this case, because there is a LID here, that decision will have the plans attached to it as an exhibit. There'll be a pre-construction meeting required with advance notice, construction start schedule, start date and construction schedule. Number 11 is a standard condition, prior to initiating activity at the site, we need in writing the name of person responsible on site and the person responsible on site during construction. Number 12 is also standard, a copy of the final updated SWIP stamped by a PE and signed by owner must be filed with the planning board and may require review by the town's engineering consultant. There's one addition, this is where the DCR had asked that the SWIP to incorporate best management practices and good housekeeping into the annual employee training. So, that phrase, Peter, is something we want to add to that.
That's fine.
And you saw that because that was in the letter that you received from the DCR?
Right.
Okay, so you're all right with that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Everyone else?
Any other questions on that? Number 13, a copy of the Stormwater Management ONM Plan for the site as a standalone document stamped by a PE and signed by the owner, including a fully executed inspection and maintenance agreement must be filed with the planning board prior to construction. I think that's also a conservation requirement, if I'm not mistaken, so we want a copy of that, too. And then, lastly, is the requirement for ASBILTS, which specifies very specifically, in order to avoid any misunderstanding, the requirement of section one, zoning section 174-10J about certificate of occupancy being tied to completion of all the site conditions and per the approved plans, and that those will be reviewed by the town's engineering consultant to provide feedback to the planning board in order for them to accept the ASBILTS as sufficient. And then, we have another condition here regarding the trees that shall remain on the southern border to be in compliance with zoning section 174-13, and I think Mimi has specific language she wants added.
So, I have the existing trees along the southern property line as identified on page three of the site plan shall remain to achieve compliance with 174-13. Any tree removal shall require the property be brought into compliance with 174-13. Just to make sure those trees stay.
And you can give me the, again, after.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
Is that, any, any problem with that, Peter?
No, 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 I mean, we had supplemental plantings that were asked for, too, we did those, they were on the plan.
Okay, so those are the conditions.
Any questions on the board? Any questions from anyone here? Any questions from anyone on Zoom? I don't see any hands raised.
Close the public hearing.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for both 200 Turnpike Road, the Southborough, a snow removal landscaping contractor facility, and for 200 Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility for a special permit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the 200 Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping, landscaping contractor facility, major site plan approval, with conditions discussed this evening, as well as approve the 200 Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility special permit for LID with conditions reviewed and discussed this evening, February 6, 2023.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Bemis. Tell Jonathan we're going to miss him.
Well, we'll be back to wrap up, but thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it.
It's my goal to finish, finalize these two decisions, hopefully this week, and have the planning board chair sign them, and get them to you, and file them with the town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
As soon as possible.
If the weather keeps staying like this, we'll be starting sooner than later, so, it's like a spring day today. Thank you.
Yeah, don't jinx it, Peter.
I'm not, I'm not, believe me, take care, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 325 Turnpike Road, continuation of a public hearing. Ms. Maria?
Shall I recuse myself? 325, would you like me to go sit on the side?
Thank you.
For the record, you're recusing yourself, right?
So, what, we received an email today requesting continuation to the next planning board meeting date of February 27. So, we have an extension request that we received.
So, we're going to continue without testimony?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we grant the extension request proposed by the applicant to continue the, the public hearing to February 27, 2023, at 7:15 PM, and, oh, no, that would actually be...
You have to extend it first.
But, okay.
One day?
No, but it's going to be 7:10, right? Because we just closed out 200. So, it's going to be 7:10, and the time that the board can, shall reach a decision for this matter shall be extended till March 3, 2023, as requested by the applicant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Houlihan?
So, sorry if I'm out of order here, Ms. Latrell, I thought Mr. Dodi asked for one discussion point today relative to the Fussin O'Neil letter that came in hot off the presses, or are we not addressing anything?
Yes, that will be addressed in the planner's report.
Oh.
So, we were able to forward that information to the applicant.
Okay.
To the engineer and applicant, and we have it on the agenda for, under the planner's report, which is an update.
Perfect, thanks.
So, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 325 Turnpike Road, sand barrier wall modification to a major site plan approval to February 27, 2023, at 7:10 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Can I change this time? Yes, we can just cross it off. I'm sure it's...
We're just adjusting the time on the extension, I don't think the applicant will have a problem with moving earlier in the meeting, by five minutes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the downtown district to have, added to the signed by law.
So, this is our second public hearing on this proposed zoning amendment for adding language to the signed by law under section D, which is basically a chart describing the dimensional requirements of signs within certain districts. And the BV District, the Business Village District is listed there, and as you recall, we have a new downtown district, and one of the things that didn't happen was the signed by law wasn't updated to include that aspect of it. So, we had proposed just simply adding downtown district next to Business Village District in Part D in that zoning by law. What we found out is because we legally advertised it specifically to that section, we discussed some other things to be changed, very minor changes, but to be consistent, and town council indicated that it would be best to not, you can't add those in at this time, we would have to repost and blah, blah, blah. So, we, there's a choice, we could move forward with just the simple change in that one section, or we could hold off and have a complete update, you know, to that by law with the three or four other items in the fall, if, if that's the choice. So, we could remove this from the warrant and tackle all of it in the fall, or the planning board can proceed with just changing, you know, asking at town meeting to change this one and then come back again.
Thank you, Karina. My thought is that I'd prefer to not do it piecemeal, because it looks like we don't know what we're doing, and just wait till the fall and do all, and there are other, other sections of the code that don't have the downtown district in it, too, so we might as well just take care of it all at once, is my opinion.
As long as we, I'm in favor of that, as long as we verbally commit that we're not going to let anything slip through the cracks.
No slippage.
There are no cracks.
Oh, you know what I mean.
Anyone else? So, should we close the public hearing on this, or?
Yes, if you're sure about, yes. If you're sure about this decision, then the planning board needs to close the public hearing. And recommend it for Fall Town Meeting.
That was going to be my next question, if there's any comments from anyone here on the downtown district and the signed by law, or anyone virtually, raise your hand. I don't see any. So, Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for downtown district being added to the signed by law regulations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
And that was to close?
Public hearing.
The public hearing. With the understanding that we go.
We make no, we take no action at this time for the public hearing for the downtown district, and wait till Fall Town Meeting.
Second for a brief discussion.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Stein.
So, is this already on the, was this, was there, did we have a placeholder?
Yes, we do.
So, wouldn't we need to vote to withdraw the article?
Sure.
Good point.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Very good.
Process is very important.
Yes, it's very important, thank you, Mr. Stein. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the Tree Protection Bylaw warrant article. Karina?
So, again, this is our second public hearing for the Tree Protection Bylaw that Mimi has spearheaded with the planning board. I don't think there are any changes from the last draft that you provided, so if there are not any, if there are no other changes, we'll be, if the planning board wants us to, we'll be submitting this current draft to Mark Purple, town administrator, to include in the warrant for printing. Unless you want to still, we'll, we'll forward this current draft, but we'll still have public hearings and say, until something comes up prior to the actual deadline for the warrant having to be signed. But this is the one we'll forward right now.
Okay.
In case there's any changes, sorry.
Yeah, so they, just to reiterate, the, this by law was before special town meeting in the fall, and it failed, and we're bringing it back, have made changes to incorporate the amendments that were requested by select board members, and we have streamlined it so it's even closer to mass general law. And next week, I'll have a graphic showing how each section relates to mass general law, and the purpose is to just, everything in this by law is already required in mass general law, and the purpose is to, to bring it closer to home, to make it easier to use, so we understand what's in mass general law, and there's some clarifications of definitions and process that are unique to Southborough. Any questions?
Any public?
Anyone in the room, tree by law, going once, going twice? Anyone virtually have any questions on the Tree Protection Bylaw, raise your hand?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for Tree Protection Bylaw warrant article to February 27 at 7:15 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Very good, next item on the agenda, we're not getting a, oh, no. It's a public hearing for the Scenic Road warrant article.
Just a quick update before I pass it to Marnie, again, this is the second public hearing for the zoning amendment, to have a Scenic Roads warrant article, and if there are no other changes proposed this evening, we'll be providing confirmation draft to town administrator's office tomorrow with what's potentially to go to print, although the public hearing will still be open in case anything else comes up.
I just want to note that both the Tree Protection Bylaw and the Scenic Road by law are not zoning bylaws, so public hearings are not required, but in the interest of transparency and open government, the planning board chose to have hearings on these two warrant articles. the planning board chose to have hearings on these two warrant articles. Ms. Houlihan?
Yeah, just quickly, just a reminder to the public, the scenic road warrant article is to make the outstanding 68 streets in town that are not numbered roads or highways in town to be designated scenic as an administrative purpose. So for our incoming DPW and those that kind of help shape our streets and landscape, that they understand that there's certain protections around our scenic roads. So nothing's changed. The presentation will be similar. And that's it. That's the update.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone here, scenic roads? Anyone virtually have any questions or comments on scenic roads? Please raise your hand. Seeing none?
Madam Chair, make a motion that we continue the public hearing for scenic roads warrant article to February 27, 2023, at 7:20 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Conservation.
Before you continue, I have one document here I have to just.
I take that back.
I'm sorry. That's why it's got the little flag on it. So the Select Board is planning on having the discussion of the three planning board warrant articles sponsored by the planning board at their February 28 meeting with intent for the Select Board to sign the warrant at their March 7, 2023 Select Board meeting. Mimi indicated that she would be attending for the tree protection by law. And Marnie, are you available for this?
So that's actually rare disease day in my world. So I will be at the State House until 6 p.m. So I will try to be here, but I can't guarantee I'll be on time.
Okay. I think it's a hybrid meeting as well. So there's opportunity to zoom in.
Okay. Virtual in. So I would like to put me on as attending.
Okay.
I just may be late.
Okay. And as.
If you give me a primer, I can pinch it for you if you're unable to make it.
Okay. And then the downtown district sign zoning amendment by law is no longer on the table at this point. So we don't have to worry about that one. So we're covered. I just wanted to make sure that we had that meeting covered. All right, sorry, Mimi. Thank you.
Now, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the first opening of a public hearing. Conservation zoning amendment 174-8.9, Wetland and Floodplain District. Are we handling them both at the same time? They both have the same?
No, two different public hearings. I mean, we can probably discuss. You don't have to read the legal ad. I have to read the legal ad all at once, yeah.
Okay. And also, Conservation zoning amendment 174-13.9, Stormwater and Erosion Control, opening of that public hearing. And Karina will read the legal ad.
Good on time. Okay. This is the notice of the public hearings. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough will hold, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 6, 2023, at 7:35 p.m. in the McCallum Hearing Room, second floor, Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, to review the proposed update to the zoning by law, 174-8.9, WFP, Wetland and Floodplain District, and remove 174-13.5, Stormwater and Erosion Control, from the zoning bylaws and create a general bylaw chapter for Stormwater and Erosion Control. A copy of the text can be viewed in the Planning Office, Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, or on the town website, southboroughmass.com. Southboroughmass.com, on the Planning Department page under News and Announcement. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed update should appear at the time and place designated or via Zoom platform at www.southrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Mimi Latrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. And just to explain that, although these are zoning amendments proposed by Conservation, they went, they were submitted to the Select Board, who then provided them to the Planning Board for the required public hearings for zoning amendments. And I believe in our audience is Melissa Danza. Yep, our Conservation Agent and Ben Smith Commission member.
Thank you. Chair, if it's okay, if I kind of dip into you, I'll go with the Wetland and Floodplain District by law first.
Sure.
All right. So essentially, the edits that have been made to this by law are required by FEMA to bring us up to the standards required at the federal level because at the state level, they're not sufficient. So the 100% of the edits to the by law are taken from the recommended model floodplain by law provided by FEMA through our state subsection of MIMA, who helps facilitate this. So the major changes are that statement of purpose, you know, to ensure the public and prevent emergencies and flooding and the impacts of work within the floodplain. I think the major thing that might confuse people with these edits is that permit section. But in reality, even though it states that a permit is now required for all construction within the floodplain, this isn't a new permit, but actually can be satisfied with either a building permit or in our case, what we, what will satisfy this requirement is our order of conditions as the Conservation Commission already requires a permit for any structure or development or alteration within the floodplain. Those are the kind of the major changes. Others are very kind of ministerial in terms of what the different zones are. And if there isn't information available for a specific zone type, then using the best elevation data available. You know, otherwise, we took out kind of the specifics to the map panels as those aren't required, as they do change. And they no longer need to be explicitly stated within the by law. And other aspects, including for the subdivision approvals, that was already existing within the by law, but just formatted and such that it's its own subsection now to be a little bit more clearer. So if anyone has any questions on the floodplain and wetland by law, we'd be happy to address those.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you. And no questions.
Mr. Stein?
Thank you. So professionally, I'm pretty familiar with flood zone impact. I think it might be a good idea, just my own opinion, and I'm sure the rest of the board will disagree with me, that we have a map of the current. And I do fully understand that the floodplain is going to change. But we are going to have, you know, a vote at town meeting. And based on my experience, both with flood zones and town meeting, people like to see maps, exactly where it is right now. Is that asking too much as a too onerous a request?
No, it's just the FEMA flood map. So I would be happy to put that as an attachment. I don't think it would necessarily go within the by law because we have to, we have to state the FEMA National Flood Base Layer. But as, you know, to use, for example, I'd be happy to provide that map.
Thanks, Melissa.
Ms. Houlihan?
Yeah, thanks, Melissa. Just my quick question is recognizing you said you've taken 100% of the recommended edits. Are we losing anything from our own Southborough zoning by law that you, that should be protected? Or have you already taken account for that?
No, nothing was taken out besides the map panel numbers and the addresses of who to contact, just because those are exactly the same. So that is the only things that were removed from this, with this edit process.
Excellent, thank you. That's all I had. Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you, Ms. Demuria.
Hi, Melissa, good to see you. Just wanted to ask a question about the taking this by law out of the zoning bylaws.
That actually isn't this by law. That will be the next one.
Just the other one?
Yep, yes, yeah. It's a little confusing. So this one is just going to be an amendment of the existing by law with these edits.
Okay, thanks very much. So I have no, no comments then. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either. So do you want to move on to?
Sure.
The next one?
I think you might have to continue this one or, these are two separate public hearings. So we should probably continue in case there's any questions or you can discuss, close, support.
Oh, okay. We have a question from the virtual audience, Mr. Bartolini. Hi, Jack. You're muted. If you have a question, feel free to unmute.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Can you, can you still hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, you're doing great.
All right, good. All right, terrific. I see all this, and I've got the by law out. And the by law is A, B, C, D, and F. And then Melissa, you're 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And I'm not sure how this all blends together. I mean, this is a big deal to a lot of people who are paying insurance on their buildings. It's not so much for me. But how does, how does all this description of changes meld into the by law that we have?
So this actually, even though there's a lot of words that, that is added to this, this does not substantially change or really change at all the areas that are impacted or the criteria. It is just stating the course in which if someone is to build within a structure, that we have to keep record of it. If there's a variance issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, then I need to keep a record of it. If there's a variance from, issued from the Building Commission, then I need to keep a record of it. And essentially, just ensuring that any permit that alters a floodplain, I just need to keep a record of it. That is truly the only difference, along with just adding that if something doesn't have a specific zone, then just the best elevation data that's available is to be utilized, which is practiced now. So it is a lot of edits, but in reality, it actually isn't changing any requirements, you know, for permits besides the town records that I need to maintain for any work within a floodplain, which we already do through an order of condition.
I, I don't disagree with you. I don't know enough. I was going to come down and see you, and you weren't there today. But the, to me, I just, I'm, I'm just looking at 174-89. And it's got A, and it's got B.
Yep.
C with the addresses that you had mentioned. But where does, I mean, it says a description of changes are, but I don't know where they're going in the by, in the by law that's existing.
I'm not sure what you're looking at. There is a red line with all of the edits in it. So everything red is new.
I, I didn't get the red line. I'm sorry. So maybe that's.
That might be.
I'll come by and see you, and you can.
We're trying to pull that up, Jack, if that will help. Do you have that, Colleen? Can you see that, Jack?
Oh, I can. Okay, so, all right, so you're adding 1 through 5 is in under A. All right, that makes more sense now. All right, I never saw this.
I can also email you a copy, Jack, if that would help.
Yeah, it would. I mean, I, I just, I mean, this, this is kind of an important issue. And I know there was some discussion last time they adopted the, the map. I don't think things went quite as smooth as they should have. And it is, you know, people that are in this or with these elevations, they're paying a hefty price on insurance. And there's a lot of issues that can happen here. So, all right. I'll get a copy of this, and then Melissa, I'll come talk to you.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, good enough.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
So should we continue this? Okay.
Make a motion. We continue the public hearing for Conservation zoning amendment, Wetlands, Floodplain District to February 27, 2023, at 7:25 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
And the next item?
Perfect. I'm going to let Ben take it away in just a second. But just to clarify for this first, this Stormwater and Erosion Control by law, the vote that the commission is requesting is for support for removal solely from the zoning by law, with the intent that we are also simultaneously proposing that this amended by law be put into the general bylaws. And I think Ben has a little bit more on the reasonings why and kind of the, the history behind it. So I'll let him go through there.
Great, thanks, Melissa. Good evening, everyone. So this, of course, relates to Southborough's Stormwater Management by law. Just a really quick background on it. That this came about, the original Stormwater Management by law, as a result of an unfunded mandate under the NIPD's program, under the U.S. Clean Water Act. Because we're a community of more than 10,000 people, and we have a municipal, separate storm sewer system, we're required to regulate construction activities where erosion is likely to cause off-site sedimentation. So to comply with that, something like a dozen years ago, Southborough passed the Stormwater, the Stormwater Management by law. It's worked fairly well. But as we've, we've worked with this, this by law, we've, you know, found room for improvement. A couple of years ago, I started pushing to purr a review of it and to think about making some changes. And we're finally at the point where we're doing that. So the, the first big change, obviously, as Melissa said, is removing it from the zoning code, what we're proposing, and in putting it into our general bylaws. And the reasoning behind that is that in the zoning code, it, an appeal of a stormwater management permit goes to the ZBA. And the ZBA doesn't necessarily have the expertise to do this. You know, it's really no different than if Conservation was hearing appeals of ZBA decisions. It's frankly, it's just not really our, our wheelhouse. Another consequence of this, that I don't think was foreseen when the original Stormwater Management by law was drafted, this came up and really surprised us. But the town's building inspector is also the zoning enforcement officer. And apparently, the zoning enforcement officer can completely overrule Conservation on a stormwater management permit. For instance, you know, reject any conditions of approval and in fact, can even waive the Stormwater Management by law in its entirety. And this happened, what, five, six years ago now, when former building inspector Mark Robidoux actually waived the Stormwater Management by law for the school street solar farm. So without getting too deep into that, that was troubling and I think causes some, some problems of, you know, fundamental fairness. I'm sort of surprised that other applicants haven't pointed out the unfairness of this one project, not having to comply while they did. Anyhow, I think this by law appropriate belongs, appropriately belongs as a, as a general by law. Another consequence of moving it like this is that appeals of a stormwater management permit would be handled just like the appeal of any other permit from Conservation, from Planning, from Board of Health, et cetera. The appeal would be handled by Superior Court. So that's the first big change. The second big change, there was an area of the Stormwater Management permit that we found was, was frankly, a little bit unfair. So as it stands right now, a storm, a stormwater management permit is required for any site where ground disturbance is proposed that's, that is more than one acre or more than 50% of the area of a lot. Now, these permits, they're, they're expensive. They generally require the services of a surveyor and a civil engineer. And the permit fees themselves, you know, cover a peer review of the application, which is another, you know, hefty expense. It's pretty unfair to those with smaller lots. You know, there, there are existing homes in town. I'm thinking like down in the Southville area, for instance, with lots that are on the order of 5,000 square feet. You know, one of these lots with 2,500 square feet of disturbance would require a stormwater management permit. And this is, this has happened in the past. And whereas another lot in town that's two or three acres, you know, could disturb up to, you know, 43,500 square feet, you know, just shy of an acre with no permit being required at all. So we wanted to address this, this fundamental unfairness. And the way we've proposed to do this. do that is that a full SMP, you know, with the engineering and surveying services and permitting fees and so forth, would only be required for land disturbance of one acre or more, full stop. What we also propose is that for land disturbances between a half of an acre and an acre, we simply lay out general erosion control requirements that are frankly, just best practices these days on construction sites, and we list these out in a document that will be available on the conservation website, and a copy of this handed out with building permits, for instance. And these are, like I said, best management practices, you know, erosion control barrier at the downhill edge of land disturbance, you know, a stone construction entrance in certain cases, or stockpiles surrounded by silt fence, or straw waddles, that kind of thing. There's no permit that you have to get. There's simply a list of these best practices that for this level of disturbance, more than a half an acre but less than an acre, just these measures that are required without all the expense of going through the permitting process. It's a kind of a rare situation where we can make permitting easier, more fair, less expensive, and at the same time achieving, you know, greater protection for the environment and for others. Next up, we discovered over the past few years where it became more obvious that there's a loophole that I don't think was anticipated with the original drafting, the Stormwater Management Bylaw. And this is a segmentation loophole. Now, for a typical Chapter 48 subdivision, a permit is required if the aggregate land disturbance of the project is greater than one acre. However, with an ANR project, land disturbance is calculated separately for each lot. So for example, if you have an eight-lot ANR subdivision, you can have an aggregate disturbance of just shy of four acres, but it won't trigger a stormwater management permit requirement because the disturbance on each individual lot is less than an acre or less than 50% currently of the lot area. So we propose to, you know, eliminate this loophole so that, you know, lots develop as part of a common development scheme. The land disturbance is calculated sort of in the aggregate fashion. And we modeled our language on this after the language that the DEP used to address the exact same issue of segmentation within the Wetlands Protection Act. Lastly, not lastly, but one other change that we're proposing is just to clarify when a stormwater management permit is needed for roadwork. Right now, it's mostly exempt, but there's some confusion. So we simplify it to saying that an SMP, a stormwater management permit, is required when a road is widened by three feet or more over a distance of 100 feet or more. And that clears it right up. And then lastly, this is just sort of some background information. You know, we've been looking at the Stormwater Management Bylaw as a whole and our supporting regulations for that, so we've, I think we've already voted a couple of these changes in. They're only regulations. But things like, we finally have adopted requiring the use of the new NOAA Atlas 14 Design Storms with the greater rainfall depths for, you know, the preparation of all drainage studies submitted to us. And we're also going to be requiring that plans, this is getting a little bit out in the weeds, but be prepared using the most current horizontal and vertical data, just so that our data can be used more easily with statewide data that's all prepared using these data. So that's sort of the 10,000-foot overview of what we're proposing with this warrant article. Love the, are there any questions or comments that you have?
Thank you, Ben. Mr. Mills?
Hey, Ben. Nice to see you.
You, too, Andy.
Ben's also the vice chair of CPC with me, so... Thanks for the proactiveness to go after this and share this up in the future. I appreciate it, and no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
No questions.
Ms. Houlihan?
Um, just two comments. The first, on our notes, it's listed as 174-13.9. The current, and I have town code open, and I see it as 174-13.5, Stormwater and Erosion Control electronically. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, yeah, my copy that I have says 13.5. It's undetermined what the new general bylaw would be, but we do have a suggestion from town council, and that will be confirmed with the town clerk and town council.
Okay.
So I apologize about that.
So just to clarify, that legal ad is correct?
Okay.
It's just our agenda. It's written Stormwater and Erosion Control, but there's a typo on the 13.9.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. No, no problem. And Ben, really great work, and I was not aware of some of these things, so thanks for making us aware of it, and I think having these type of open conversations just helps us be a little bit more holistic as we work together. So thank you for the work. My one question to you is, what do you anticipate being the most controversial situation at town meeting, and how are you planning to address kind of this generally? Is this through a PowerPoint presentation? I know we're all limited to five minutes in our presentation, but I guess what do you see as the most controversial?
As far as the most controversial, you know, I'm not entirely sure whether it will be removing it from the zoning code or removing the segmentation loophole. I'm going to predict that we may hear from Jack Bardalini on these issues. I'm hopeful that the correcting or making more fair the thresholds for filing for the permit will be very well accepted and will carry the day. I think it's an important change to make. Removing the Stormwater Bylaw from the zoning code, you know, I think the biggest argument for that is this issue that we ran into with the solar farm on School Street. The fact is, and I, you know, I couldn't picture Lori, you know, I don't know her super well, but my interaction with her, I certainly wouldn't expect her to waive the Stormwater Management Bylaw for any project. But the fact that it could happen, the fact that it has happened in the past, like I said, it raises another fundamental issue of fairness. There was no reason given why this project got a free pass, whereas, you know, every other project that's come before us hasn't. And I've been worried about that ever since it happened, and I'd like to fix it. Then the other argument in favor of it, and you know, there's the concern that appeals will now go to Superior Court, which certainly would involve some expense if there's an appeal. Now, I will say, since the Stormwater Management Bylaw was approved and entered into the town code, there's been one appeal to the ZBA, and their action was to tell the appellant to go back to conservation and for everybody to play nice and come up with a compromise. And that's, I've been on conservation for about eight years now, and that predates me, so I don't know all of the details on that one. I'm hopeful that when this is presented at town meeting, if indeed I'm the one presenting, and I'm hoping that our chair, Mark Passamato, will be at my side, who's been on the commission for 30 years and will know these details. So that's potentially where the most controversy is, and I think there's some very good answers to questions that will come up on it.
Thanks for the clarity. I appreciate it. I, you know, definitely support removing it from the town, from zoning and putting it into the general. Makes a lot of sense, and particularly on those loopholes. So appreciate your diligence here. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Latrell.
Thank you. Mr. Maria?
Hi, Ben. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Thanks for going through. Most of my questions have been answered. I did want to just ask you about the exemption under D, exemption of construction and associated grading of a way that's been approved by the planning board, and then there's an exception to the exemption, so I just want to make sure I understand. That says accept those in conjunction with residential development or redevelopment. And so I just wanted to ask you, if you could just describe that just a little bit to me.
I can get that, Ben, if that's...
Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, so that is just, basically just certifying that, yes, subdivisions or redevelopment that is pursuant to the planning board subdivision control law are not exempt. Because I know sometimes the way people read bylaws, you know, you have your thresholds first, and then your exemptions can sometimes be read as, you know, here's your applicability, but if you hit this exemption, then you really don't need it. So we want to ensure that, yes, the construction associated grading as approved by planning is exempt unless it is a subdivision as required.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I did just want to ask also, Ben, one more question. I do have a concern about taking this Stormwater Erosion Control out of the zoning bylaw, not for any of the reasons that you mentioned, because I think they're very valid, but because of, you would not have the required 2/3 majority vote at town meeting to change any of these, this bylaw. And so I just was wondering if you see that as a concern, because this would be majority vote then if it's in the general bylaws.
Just trying to make sure I understand the question.
So the threshold to change this would be lower because the zoning bylaw changes require 2/3 majority. Am I correct?
Oh.
I just want to make sure. 2/3 majority vote at town meeting, but this lowers the threshold so that it only requires a majority vote, so...
And the worry would be that we could, it could be changed in a way that would not offer as much protection? Is that the, it would be, change it?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be easier to change. Yep, and you could have a favorable haul, and they might just change it. So just was wondering if that's been considered, or if you think that's, you know, anything to consider.
It's certainly something to think about, and I know the commission has thought about it, and, you know, we have to weigh that against, you know, the downsides of the situation we find ourselves in now. One argument that I think supports moving it to the general bylaws is that, you know, I said this as an unfunded mandate. We have to regulate this. It's required under the NIPD's program, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. You know, that's why this bylaw was put together, why it was approved, and why we enforce it. And if it were to, for instance, get watered down too much, we would be out of compliance with that, which would, you know, ultimately, the town would end up getting fined, I believe, you know, if we're not compliant with the, you know, the NIPD's requirements. So I think that would keep us honest.
Yeah, good. No, that's a great response, too. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben and Melissa. I support moving it out of the zoning code. I think your arguments are very, very valid, and I support them. Just one question. Under exemptions, you list as described in Section 3.3, 3.7. Is that your regulations?
No, that is just the applicability above. So 3.3 is any residential development or redevelopment proposed pursuant to subdivision control law, and 3.7 was the maintenance reconstruction or resurfacing of any public way. So that's kind of what I was talking about, and it depends on how you read it sometimes, that people try and get that loophole by having the applicability first and then stating, oh, but I hit this exemption afterwards. So by referencing that these exemptions exist, except, you know, you're really not exempt if you are doing a subdivision or maintenance reconstruction of a road that's less than 300 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the room have a question on these Conservation Commission bylaw changes? Going once, going twice? Mr. Bardalini?
Yes, just quickly. Again, I want to, I'll come and see you, Melissa, and talk to you about this. It bothers me a little bit that we're going to have to go to court on this for something. Specifically, this is a rain bylaw. It's rainwater, and I don't think people understand the simplicity of this. And it's not, I think a lot of people think this is just for developers. This is for everybody. And it gets a little disturbing to me that now, you know, you go to put a pool in, or you go to do something, and all of a sudden, your rainwater becomes in the way, and you've got to go to court over this instead of going, like we did to the ZBA, and I didn't do it. I don't know who did it, to the ZBA, and then the ZBA says, go back and work something out. So I don't know. I want to go over this a little bit more. The eight lots, I got caught in the segmentation of it. It's a little onerous because what you do is you force everybody, and I don't know who's got eight street lots, but you force them to do, to build the lots all at once and do everything at once, where somebody might want to do one at a time over a period of years. So that kind of bothers me a little bit. And then the, and I'm not so sure what's right or wrong with that. The other thing, though, Ben, I want to ask you, because I do remember the solar farm on, it's Tony Kwan put it in, I guess it was, but why didn't the conservation appeal that to the ZBA? You could have done that, you're on your own, and you didn't.
You have 30 days, and you didn't know.
It works both ways.
I wish Mark Passamato was here to help me with that one, Jack. I don't recall the reasoning of that. I want to say, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not 100% sure on that, so I'm not going to guess on it. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not recalling the reason off the top of my head.
I don't know. For something that's supposed to be simple, it's a little cumbersome, I think. One of the things I wanted to ask is, Melissa going to be able to do this, or there's always going to be a hearing before one of your meetings?
The Stormwater Management, a full permit, or?
The Stormwater Management Permit. I mean, at one time, we talked about Melissa doing it in-house, kind of like the same way the Board of Health operates, where they okay a septic system without having a meeting on it.
Everything up to an acre will be, no meeting, no permit fees, nothing, everything up to an acre. It's only an acre or more. So that takes a lot of the burden off of, especially, you know, homeowners, you know, with smaller lots, you know. It frankly, was kind of crushing to me to see somebody, you know, they have a septic system fail, and on top of that, surveying, engineering, permitting fees, $4,000, $5,000, on top of this unexpected huge expense.
Oh, yeah, it's very expensive, very, very expensive.
And Jack, to address the, you raised an issue about segmentation. The way the DEP addressed it in the Wetlands Protection Act is, you know, part of a common development scheme, and the work is done on these adjoining lots within two years of each other. Melissa, did we include that language? I know we talked about it.
In the regulations, in the definitions of the regulations, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so in terms of doing, you know, doing one lot at a time, you know, we took right from Wetlands Protection Act this two years, and if they're done two years apart, then this segmentation clause simply doesn't apply. You can do that. You can treat the lots individually.
Okay.
Is that it, Jack?
Yeah, I'm going to go over it with Melissa again and just see what it is. I'm sorry. I just, I didn't realize this was going to be tonight. I didn't see any of the red lines, so I, I'm a little bit behind. So I, I'm a little bit behind on this. But I'll talk to Melissa and see you at the next meeting, I guess.
Very good. Ben and Melissa, how would, how did you find out that the permit was waived on School Street?
So this was back, this predates Melissa. This was when Beth Rosenbloom was our administrator. And how do I put this? Our prior building inspector was somewhat animated, I'll call him. And I think she was told directly from, by the building inspector, with some pithy, pithy language, that he was going to waive it, or that it was, that it was waived. And, you know, we, as a commission, frankly, we were, we were stunned. Hadn't, hadn't occurred to this, that, to us that this was even a possibility. I was not the vice chair at the time, and I was not involved. I know there were some conversations between Beth and Mark Posamato, and Mark Purple, and I'm pretty sure Aldo Cipriano as well. But I wasn't a part of those conversations and I, these distant recollections, but I don't want to, you know, essentially make a guess here at what they spoke about without, without Mark here.
And I'll try and get some historic information that I can send to the board as well, if that would be useful. I'll see what I can dig out through my files as well for that one.
The reason I ask is I think you have like 20 or 30 days to appeal a decision of the, the building inspector to the ZBA. And if you don't find out until, you know, 32 days, you've lost that chance. That's why I ask. And I don't, you know, I don't know how forthcoming he was, or if you just happened to stumble upon it. So that's the only reason I ask. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in here, virtually? I don't see any hands. Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I make a motion. We continue the public hearing for conservation zoning amendment, Stormwater and Erosion Control 2, February 27, 2023, at 7:25 PM. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Thank you, Melissa and Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
You, too. Next item is a discussion item, NBTA communities. This is a quick, do you want me and Colleen to take this one?
Yes, please.
So I know Colleen submitted the action plan, so that was there prior to 131. And I think you already got some minimal comments back.
I did. I did some corrections they asked for.
So they got it. And then we had our first meeting with Bowler to go over the very confusing compliance model that the state wants filled out. And our first meeting with.
Chappa.
Chappa.
Oh, Chappa.
Who's doing the, helping us with outreach. So, so things are moving. Anything you want to add to that?
No, but Dorian did, from Shopsey.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. Dorian, from Shopsey, joined us. And I think she'll be doing so more often. So a nice joint venture.
Any questions? Any questions? Any questions from our virtual audience? I don't see any hands raised. Okay, next. St. Mark's, discussion item, St. Mark's, street location, planning board review under Mass General Law 41, Section 81i. Can you bring us up to date, Karina?
Yes, I can. It's my yellow sheet. If I have that, I'm good. Okay. So mid-January, January 13th, so town administrator Mark Purple submitted some hard copy plans that were developed by VHB for the St. Mark's Street relocation. Following that, they submitted some PDFs as well. And then we also received some stormwater calc's related to the intersection. This information was provided to Fussin O'Neil so that we could get a cost estimate for them to do a review of the information and provide comments back to the planning board. I initially received a TA, but there was some scope changes we had to make to reduce some of the scope because we didn't feel we needed a second review. This is basically a complete review one time, and then those comments conveyed to the town administrator select board from the planning board. I believe I received the TA this afternoon, and that is for the review for $3,500, which the invoices will go to the town administrator, and they'll produce the payables for that. Similar to how an applicant would do it, since this is the engineering consultant review. Let's see here. I had also asked VHB, and we have Greg Russell here again this evening representing VHB.
Since 7 o'clock?
Yes, since 7:00. Thank you. So quickly, for some traffic information related to this, he did provide some studies on the library drainage information from the past. And there were no real formal traffic studies done for roadway realignment like this. However, Fussin O'Neil will be reviewing, their traffic engineer will be reviewing that for applicable technical aspects. But Greg did provide a memorandum describing some of the history of that component. Let's see. So in the morning, we'll be signing that TA, that task authorization for Fussin O'Neil to continue, to complete their review, and then we can report back on those findings to the planning board. Today, I received another notice from Mark Purple, town administrator, asking that the planning board also discuss at this time, if they're so inclined, the discontinuance of the old layout. So I was a little bit confused. So I contacted town council for clarification on, you know, a continuance at this time. And there was still some confusion about, I asked, well, he indicated to me, to the best of my knowledge, understanding that this discontinuance was the main, the thing that this planning board should be discussing. And I said, well, what am I doing with this proposed layout? And he said, well, the planning board doesn't have to do that, but they requested to do it. And it goes back to the MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81, and the language there. So in moving forward, I think it's a good idea that this process is happening now for the design, to vet and surface any kind of issues that another engineering firm might see with a new set of eyes before the project gets totally built. It's just a good practice. But the discontinuance can also happen. So discontinuance has to be done at town meeting, has to be approved. But you can discontinue a town right away, but it still exists, in a fact that someone can drive over it and use it. So I think that's where some of the confusion lies. Because typically with a subdivision, the road is reviewed under subdivision and designed, then it gets built. And then, once it's finished being built, it gets reviewed, the as-builts, and then it goes to town meeting for acceptance. And then another instance, you might recall, Dell had a Washington Street, where they had a public road, Washington Street, and they relocated it and then had to discontinue it. So that was my experience of a discontinuance. And those were planning board endorsed plans, both of them, the acceptance and the discontinuance. But I guess it's town council's opinion that the discontinuance plan doesn't need to be endorsed by the planning board. So maybe it was just because both plans were there at the same time that the acceptance was. Because it's, I don't know the reasoning, and we might have to follow up more. So there's where some confusion came in. So from my opinion, I think it's good that the planning board is doing this process now. It can only help the project. And then if there's discussion on the discontinuance, I thought that we would need some kind of plan or deed or something that says what's being continued. Because what are you voting on, or what are you opining on if you don't know? All we have right now is a design plan. So that's still my lingering question. And town council said that he has no objection to the chair contacting him directly for clarification on that, if there's a question on this. But I can also, again, find out what we would need, other than just a notice from town administrator to discuss this. Because I feel like, what are we discussing? We only have design plans. So I'm a little confused. So maybe if any of you have history on this process, if you know of any examples.
So Karina, I think we have an example right there where the St. Mark's intersection was once relocated to align better with the driveway across the street at St. Mark's around 2006. I don't think we ever discontinued that road. So that parcel became where we leased the land to St. Mark's. They built that long stone wall. But technically, I think that road still shows up on the Mass DOT plans because it wasn't ever officially discontinued, its leased, that parcel. So I don't think that went to town meeting, didn't get voted on. I don't think plan, select board held a hearing, which I think is the process. So it's, what happens is, though, if you, if you don't discontinue, it continues to show up on plans, as if it's still there. If you look at Mass DOT, it shows that road is still there.
So it's almost like when a project like this happens, it should be like a title search, like when you purchase property, not only for location and historic, who really owns it and what really happened, but were there any spills on this property, you know, 21ees? Unlikely. I don't know. I'm not an environmental engineer. But, you know, there's a lot of things that you do diligence on before you acquire property. So that's my two cents.
So I contacted the town clerk's office today and asked whether they kept records on road acceptance and road discontinuance. And they do. So they're going to be looking for that. I went through all the, the town warrants from 1999 to the present, and I don't see that that piece of the road was ever accepted as a public way. And the old layout was never discontinued at town meeting. So I don't know how you discontinue a road that's never been accepted. So town clerk is looking, looking into the documents for that. Ms. Houlihan?
Ms. Latrell, this is a situation that prior to joining the planning board, when I felt independent counsel should be requested by the planning board. The reason being is, I want to say it was maybe December of 2021, town council, Tellerman, joined a planning board meeting where we discussed the relocation. And he had a very complicated definition of relocation with a capital R versus relocation with a little r. And I would prefer personally on a planning board to have a legal counsel who understands the law specific to this type of information. And I know that he's general counsel. I do think we need a specialist. So that's my recommendation to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Stein?
So this, to me, is sort of reminiscent of other situations where the planning board has tried to mitigate things that were done outside of the correct process. And what's different about it is that, at least my interpretation of this law, we're really, our governance over this is just a comment on it. So we actually don't have, I don't think, the recourse. Now, whether or not we should get independent counsel, because I'm, I'm not a municipal attorney. So you could, you could be correct. And I'm certainly willing to entertain that. But it would seem to me, the path of least resistance might be for us to just, you know, issue a statement to the select board with our concerns and close it out. I'm just throwing it out there. You know, we can, we, my experience with asking for independent counsel is the town council will likely advise the select board against assigning it and cite the reason that I just said. Maybe that could happen. But then again, maybe, maybe the select board will say, hey, thank you, but we think the planning board has a legitimate concern, and we want to delve further into this. It's possible, I guess. But I think we should just sort of at least consider, you know, moving on. And it's not because I'm not horrified at the way this whole thing happened, which I am. It's disgusting. But at this point, given how the law reads, we might want to just handle it that way. Thanks.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah, Jesse, you bring up an interesting approach. Because, I mean, I guess in the end, that's all we're going to do is give a, we're going to do a report. So our report could be, hey, the road was never accepted to begin with. And, I mean, I'm just, I guess, I'm thinking too, like, the end game, what are we trying to do? I mean, I think we heard Greg laid it out specifically, why the road was getting moved, the requirements that were given to his company and what they, they came up with and everything. How, how we have the, the current situation at that location completely separate in terms of who did what and everything. But in the end, if our jurisdiction is to put a report together, I think we just, maybe we just say our concerns. And I agree, too, that having the, you know, special town council, that, in the end, was it going to, we going to be able to push back on anything? Well, I don't know. Yeah. All right. So I'm, we got to.
And the feedback I received today, to the best that I could understand, it appeared that, so we have two notices. We have the initial notice, and that's a legal term that I was learned today. So the first notice was when town administrator submitted the design. The second notice was today, when the town administrator, when Mark submitted an email asking for the planning board to discuss the discontinuance. So we have, first notice is the design of the new road, second notice is the discontinuance. And it's the discontinuance, I believe, that council, town council, Tellerman indicated was the one of more significance. But we're in this process. Town administrator has agreed that the planning board could, would move forward with this review. They're providing the budget for that review. We're being diligent about making sure what that review entails so that there's no waste, but it's important. And then, you know, the next step is the discussion of the discontinuance. But again, I don't know what you're discussing on the discontinuance. Do we go by the design plan?
Can I ask a question?
So why, why wouldn't Attorney Tellerman attend? I mean, are we expected to resolve and end this, the CBA? I mean, are we expected to resolve and end this this evening? Because if not, I think that it would be, may be sensible for a town council to attend the next meeting, to address our questions, especially Marnie's question about relocation with a little r and a capital r. I think that I would like to ask him directly, you know, even if he's on Zoom, how he's arrived, you know, exactly, really drill down on what our recourse is and what our power is, so to speak, in this matter.
Yes, I believe he was intending to intend regarding the memorandum of understanding discussion with the contingency, not this evening, but because there were... Mimi, you might recall, remember initially we wanted him to attend this meeting, but there was a conflict of availability.
He said it was...
He said it was premature because at the last select board meeting, they had agreed to make changes to the MOU. So he didn't want to come and discuss what was if there was something else. Although the new MOU was posted in the select board packet today. So I did ask that he come to the next meeting to discuss that and certainly discuss this. And if he's not available, someone else at his firm.
So I heard Karina said that he offered that you could come visit with him and he could talk. Is that right?
Call.
Oh, call.
Yeah, we were just talking a phone call because I...
But Mimi could reach out to him and...
I always ask, would you mind if Mimi gives you a call? And he says, absolutely not. She's always...
I'd prefer that he be here to answer the questions of the whole board.
Right, because the interpretation is difficult to reconvey because it's hard to understand, but then, you know, because it's legal stuff and then now you have to convey it and you're like, you can't write fast enough.
So the way I see this, it's two separate things. We have the relocation of the road. And I think there's value in having that peer reviewed and if there's any, you know, red flags that stand out to, you know, make the select board aware of that before we continue on down this path. And then the relocation or the discontinuance of the road, I think we need to find out the history of that road and whether it's ever been accepted. Is it a public way? And pass that information on to the select board. But as far as any, you know, quote unquote, power, we really have none. We can issue a report, but we can do any investigation or whatever within that 45 days in order to come up with that report. But that's what it is, is a report.
Karina, can we add to the list of Fussin' O'Neill about whether or not the road was ever accepted and what that means? Would they... Is that something they would comment on?
No, I think that's like an attorney task.
Well, town clerk's looking into it because they have the records there.
Okay. I just didn't know if Fussin' O'Neill ever dabbled in... Like, you know, they give opinions on all the other stuff, but like if it...
Dangerous territory for engineers. Sorry.
Greg, do you have anything you would like to add to this conversation?
Thank you. So I mean, I think in, and again, not looking at the plan at the moment, but I, you know, I think what you have is a paper street, which you have a defined right of way. And the street has moved. But, you know, so you have a wide open area. So the whole area is considered part of a street. This occurred on the town common during the Main Street project, where there is, the common itself is within the right of way of the entire, of Main Street and Common Street. There was one single right of way.
Can you turn that microphone on?
I don't know.
It's a little hard to hear you down the center.
Nope. So, sorry, sorry. So the, you know, I guess what you kind of have is a, you know, one large right of way. That was kind of defined from the, you know, if we're talking the St. Mark's intersection, you're kind of talking the small stone wall that went around the corner and continued all the way where the old road was, straight down the path. And that whole area would technically be considered a road. You know, so where you, even though you, you know, the road doesn't... The road itself wasn't necessarily discontinued. Maybe the use of the, the use of the road. You know, so you've redefined where the road is, but it's technically all still road. When the survey was done out on Main Street, there was no defined property line for the town common. The whole, the property lines or the town right of way extended from the south side of Main Street to Common Street. So that was all technically a roadway. And then it was defined later, the right of way was defined separately as a separate... So I think that's kind of where you're at here. So I'm not sure there's really anything to discontinue at the moment. Or there was anything to discontinue. I could be wrong, but that's just my reading of it.
Mimi, I have a question. How are you supposed to convey land that is a right of way?
Well, then, yeah, so in that case, then you would discontinue, or you can discontinue that section and define it based on a set order of taking layout plan.
That's not an engineering task, that's a lawyer task?
It's a survey, survey and lawyer. And how that's written up, the order of taking.
The ultimate goal is to convey it.
That would be the, if it was an order of taking, it would be the other way around. This is a... I'm not sure how a lawyer would term it, but...
So... So Greg, thanks again for coming in. So you're saying that the whole area from where the road is today down to where is considered...
So I mean, I, and I, I didn't, I have not lived here long enough to have known the road, to have gone in its previous iteration. But if, looking back on Google Earth and the aerial photos going back to about 2000, 2000, 2003, you can see the original road that basically ran parallel to the stone wall along the St. Mark's Fields up to, until it hit Marlborough Road. Pretty much right away where the culvert is that goes across Marlborough Road now.
Where it is today?
No, yeah, further up. There's a culvert kind of that runs from the St. Mark's Field across just south of the Flashing Beacon. So it ran all the way up, kind of ran all the way up there. And then there was a small, then there was a, where the road is now, there was an opening there as well. So basically, I think all that was done was they cut off and loomed in seed that, kind of like that lane up to the north of Marlborough Road and then widened that other paved area. And I'm, again, I'm basing this all on Google, Google Earth, so I'm not a...
So this is when it was changed? So it used to, there's the other one of the original road just to get orientation.
So you see the pipe on the, or the line on the far left? That culvert is still there.
Which is Marlborough Road?
Yep, just to the left of Marlborough Road. The thin black line.
So that was the original?
Yeah.
That St. Mark's Street went, you know, pretty much north until it hit Marlborough Road.
So that's, yeah, so... So that, that...
And so you're saying that all the way from the stone wall all the way to Marlborough Road is road, right of way?
And there's no definition between what, you know, is it? It's all just road? That's the way, that's the way the right of way...
Colin, can you get the date on that? Two thousand.
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Luttrell, so I feel like we're just dealing, spending time on conjecture, and we don't have a lot of definitive answers. So, I mean, we could spend all night doing this. I just don't think it's useful for our time considering it's 1020. So I don't know if we, you know, adjourned this meeting and moved to the next, but I don't know if there's going to be much more we can determine. And particularly if you have no documents and you're not really referencing anything or can cite anything specific, I don't think it's helpful for this planning board.
Madam Chair, could I speak?
Oh, one minute, David.
Just one thing, I did want to reference. I know the last time I was here, I had referenced, I think, miscorrectly, that Time Bond was, had worked on something, it was Weston and Sampson. And I did get Ms. Demure's email. And I meant to, I didn't get around to responding to it and ended up going to Karina's.
So I have to just, Marnie's correct. We do not need to spend much, much more time on the technical aspects of this because we're, at this point in my view, we're just figuring out where our jurisdiction is and how we're going to proceed. So let's, I would request that we do not delve further into the technical aspects of this matter. Thank you.
I agree with that, but I guess I'm with Marnie then in terms of if that whole area is considered part of the right of way, I think we need someone from a legal standpoint to tell us where is the road? Because if, if, if we had some private applicant come to us with something like that, yeah. So, no offense. I mean, if we're not doing our job if we...
Well, lucky you do, it's not a public hearing. It's the whole problem.
Yeah. So hopefully, we'll have either town council or someone from his firm at the next meeting. We'll have more information from the town clerk on the status of those roads.
And also review from Fussin' O'Neill on the technical aspect.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you. Mr. Tullerman, I don't know if you watched the meeting the other night with the selectmen. His role is to do what the selectmen tell him to do. You know, and they told him to get rid of licenses and he got rid of licenses. You know, it's quite extraordinary when attorneys say things that are absolutely essential and then when they're told to remove them, they remove them. The same thing applies here. He was belittling you last week. You know, he was belittling the role of planning board. He's saying it's inconsequential. It doesn't matter what they do. I don't care what they do. He's saying this repeatedly. They're just sort of rubber stamping you. You know, it doesn't, and site plan, it doesn't matter. It's a rubber stamp. You know, it's quite incredible listening to him belittling the planning board. I think your role is quite clear here, frankly. It's to sort of say what you think should be done about this road. Why is it being discontinued? Should it be discontinued? I don't think it should be. It's the oldest road in Southborough. It is an Indian, an original Indian trail. Why are we discontinuing it? Because Vanessa Hangan came up with a plan with DPW that it should be discontinued and we should build a new intersection, costing us $1 million. I don't think that's a good plan at all. I think, I think the selectman's plan is incredibly wasteful of town resources and completely unnecessary. This road is perfectly okay. You can travel down it and turn left and right. I spoke to the fire chief, the police chief about it. They don't have any problem with it whatsoever, the way it is right now. Nothing. The fire chief says you can, don't have to do a single thing to it. Yes, they have to be careful when a long fire rig comes in, but how often does a fire rig go down there? There are many, many intersections in Southborough which are way tighter than that road. I think this is just a setup. You know, don't fall victim to the Tullerman and the board and the selectmen here. Make up your mind about what you think this project should be, I urge you. My opinion, Frank, I'll give it to you right now, is this whole, entire project is a waste. We've thrown away half a million dollars when we never should have spent one cent on it. We did it for, you know, mischief purposes by giving a private school a free parking lot. I think the whole thing stinks from the bottom. I think it should be canceled outright and the property handed back to St. Mark's and they clear it up. They came into this with their eyes wide open. They knew town meeting had authority to cancel the land swap. There's absolutely no way they can tell the town to spend money and clean it up. They entered this whole arrangement with their eyes wide open. They knew it was 50/50 or less, in fact, way less. Because, you know, very few people think it's going to go through town meeting. And I think the public are looking to you, the planning board. It's an independent board, not subject to, subjugation to the board of selectmen. You know, they're doing this for political reasons. You realize that, political reasons. They voted last May, not recently, last May, to endorse this thing and get it built. They haven't paid one single attention to all the issues which have been brought up about misspending the 290 grand and all that graft, illegal graft. Yes, you know...
So that, that has nothing to do with us?
But it is because your job is to investigate. The state law allows you, you can have an investigation. Have an investigation. Why is it being closed? Is it legitimate? Why does it have to be closed? Why can't it continue? Give me one good reason why we can't continue this road forever. Give me one good reason. There isn't one. There is not a single reason why this road should be discontinued. It has minor flooding caused by a wall built by St. Mark's. Let them solve the problem. Let them tear the wall down. Why are we discontinuing a road? Because St. Mark's built a wall across it. It's just astonishing to me. I think you need to take a policy position here, planning board. You know, think, why are we doing this? Give me one good reason why we're closing this road. One reason. Any of you? Why are we doing it? But this is the whole point. You, your job is to have an investigation and question why. That's why the words are in the state law because people close an open road for mischief reasons.
So it's, we are offering a report on the layout of the new road, the discontinuance of the old public way, if it ever was one, and not on any grants or state or... That's not within our jurisdiction.
I think what you should look at is, look at what are the legitimate reasons for closing a longstanding oldest road in Southborough? What significant reason have you been given to do that other than the former DPW's sort of grand scheme? Because it was a way simple, more scheme than that to solve that flooding, that so-called flooding problem. It's dead easy. You just cut a hole in the wall and dig a ditch, a swale. It didn't require half a million dollars. The fight at town meeting is going to be, are we going to throw another half million when we didn't need the thing in the first place? We don't need this project. We don't need the park. We don't need the road. We don't need the intersection. We don't need any of it. It is nothing but, I think, is classic government waste. And I classify that as frankly is fraud. I think this project is fraudulent.
Okay.
They are asking town meeting to spend money needlessly.
We have, I have, we hear you loud and clear.
I want to make myself abundantly clear.
You have...
In technicalities.
You have made yourself abundantly clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, one second. Let me just, would you like to reiterate the reasons that this project began?
This project started, sorry. This project started to look at drainage, look at the turning movements, look at adding the sidewalk, which was part of a town plan previously prepared by a town committee, and look at the library, ways to improve the library drainage. All as one package. as one package. We didn't look, we weren't looking at little specific things. We came up with a plan to address all of it. And then with the grant, that offered an opportunity to build it. That was not, whether, could, we have done smaller things to address individual things? Yes. I don't think anyone has denied that, declined, declined that. This was kind of looked at as a overall plan on how to fix multiple issues.
And it was the opinion of your firm that the way to address all of these things was what was put forth?
So the best way to address all of those issues was that particular plan. Could, we have looked at other options or looked deeper at other options? Yes. Could, I don't know the full history of the public outreach or public.
Right, yeah, that's not within your jurisdiction, yeah.
But, you know, there are, there's always different ways to, you know, design a route, design a road, fix, fix, fix items, skin a cat.
Okay.
So, but, you know, so there's all different ways to do it, and this was the best way to address all of those options all at once.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's late.
Just identify yourself and your address.
Oh, sorry. James Nichols Worley, 94 Main Street. I know it's late, it won't keep us too long. Two questions. So from what I understand, St. Mark's Street had already been moved in the past, is, and two, the planning board is not looking into the total, you know, shutdown of the road. When you're talking about the potential discontinuation, if the road was ever moved in the first place, would just be removing a section of the road. Okay, it's, I mean, I'm glad to clarify that because I'm a little incensed about people talking about how this is one of the oldest roads in town, as if our pilgrim forefathers paved this road with their hatchback sedans. So I'm really looking forward to the thorough report of the planning board and I hope you continue with the good work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. Greg, thank you for coming back and for answering my questions, which you sent along So I had reached out to the library previously and had, I was given the PAR report from 2014, and then you kindly provided the Weston and Sampson report from 2018. I didn't have time to go through it, but of the two reports, first of all, are they sort of congruent? Because it's really about, both reports are about the library, and at least with PAR, they indicate that the problem is coming from St. Mark's property. In their, in their schematic, they have like a, I don't know if you're familiar with that report, but they've got this red line that starts right at the intersection that goes all the way like down to the library. So I guess my question is, we've got these two reports, are they saying the same thing?
So what I, and I'm, again, I, it's been a while since I've read.
No, that's okay, I don't mean to grill you, I'm really trying to find the answer.
The PAR report was, the library initiated the PAR report to do a general drainage study of the area of what was causing the issues at the, in the library. The, they were then, they then commissioned Weston and Sampson to take those reports, or take, take that report and develop options to solve the, so the PAR report was, what is the issue? The Weston and Sampson report is how to fix it.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't.
I think.
Okay, that's right, because they, they made recommendations in PAR, but they, they, okay, all right.
And then Weston, Weston and Sampson went into detail on costs, like actual, what, the various options to fix that.
So of the options in Weston and Sampson report, how much of that was incorporated into the VHB design, the total engineering?
So the, we met with Weston and Sampson and the building department prior to this job starting. We addressed parts of those issues with, in the Main Street project during, during construction. I believe then part of the issue was to fix the driveways to keep water, roadway water from going into down the driveway.
Library driveway?
The north one. And then in general, water was, water does come, or did come down across that triangle area and kind of sheet flow across that area. St. Mark's Street is crowned, which is what causes the puddling at the, you know, so there's a crown.
Crown, like in the middle, the center is like a dome?
The center is raised slightly.
Raised, okay.
As you come from the church and go down, it's crowned, and, you know, if you look at the sides of the road, you can tell where the water is kind of digging out along the edge of the pavement.
Yeah.
The water that lands on the east side of the road either flows off into that, into the gravel parking lot area, and then eventually makes its way down to the library parking Or it continues down along the, if it gets stuck, it continues down along the roadway edge and either sits there at the bottom or goes around onto Marlboro Road and then goes down into the library parking lot. If it lands on the north or the west side of the road, travels along the edge of the roadway until it gets to the, the bottom of the hill and that area. So the, the low point of St. Mark's is at Marlboro Road. One of the issues is on Marlboro Road, where, where St. Mark's, where the new portion of St. Mark's comes in is a high point, so the water can't get out, and it just sits there.
Is there a plan for a non-vehicular access onto Marlboro Road to use their drainage to hook up to the drainage on Marlboro Road?
There is a, right now there's a stub, so I guess, I'm assuming this is going back to your question about the easements or?
Yes, you answered my question, just for the record, that there is no curb cut required highway access permit because the town, and I looked up on Mass DOT, so thank you for that, but that, and that's when I realized that the road is the old plan, because it's never been fixed on the maps, but that we, we have local control over Route 85.
Yes.
And you can click, if, just so everyone knows, it's ArcGIS, and you can click on the roads and see where we have local control and where we don't have local control. So we have local control. But on the drainage, we are able to apply, or a town can apply to use drainage on a state road as a non-vehicular access. And I was just wondering if we, did we hook up to that?
This is the town system.
So the town system is under Route 85?
This is, so everything on Route 85, everything on Route 85, under Route 85, whatever, is controlled by the town.
Okay.
Same thing on Route 30 until you get just past Sears Road.
So we don't need to request?
You need nothing from Mass DOT.
Is it though, do we use drainage out under the road, under Marlboro Road?
Yes. You have, or, well, we installed drainage up to, as part of the, the Main Street project, installed drainage up to just past the north driveway.
Past the what, sorry?
Oh, sorry, the south library driveway.
South library driveway. Okay, I have one more on the drainage, if you don't mind. I found on the plan, there's these drainage structures, number 30 and 36, so you might not know what they are, but.
These are the ones that the.
I, I think they're.
Would be at the top of the, the north of the parking lot, right?
Yeah, so they are not yet installed then, correct?
Those, those are not installed yet.
They would be, they are St. Mark's property and it would be St. Mark's problem, I guess.
So, I mean, and that goes back to the memorandum of understanding and all that, and you can either do it so, you know, they would maintain it, you know, and hook up to the drainage system to allow, that's a rain garden, so it would be an overflow into the town drainage system. Could be up to them to maintain, or, you know, it can be up to the town to, you know, they can pay the town, the town can maintain, there's different ways around that. But either, you either need a drainage easement, if the town's going to maintain it, you would need a drainage easement, if they're going to maintain it, it's a connection to the town system.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, Jack, can I have one more question? Have you installed, Mr. Russell, have you installed? Oh, sorry. David Perry, 22 Main Street. You've installed a catch basin at the existing intersection, haven't you? I saw it the other day.
There is a.
There is a new catch basin at the existing intersection, isn't there?
Not that I recall being out there.
Well, I have it on the map, I was up there, photographed it.
Okay.
You've put a pipe underneath Marlboro Road all the way up to existing intersection, and you've put a catch basin there, because that's the, would be the end of their parking lot.
There's a manhole.
Yes.
That's installed at the end of, at the, so there's a manhole installed in Marlboro Road.
Right, just at the existing intersection.
At the intersection, and that's, that's where, there's a manhole installed there, there's a Verizon duct bank that runs all the way down.
My point here is, you've already solved the problem about flooding at the existing intersection, because you already have a manhole there. You have a pipe already, you put it in already, and you've put in a catch basin already.
So did you ask your one question, David?
But that's, don't you see what I'm getting at? The flooding problem has been solved already.
All right, are we ready to move on from this discussion item? The next item on the agenda is a discussion item that should be quick, the St. Mark's Street tree and stone wall removal, an update?
Very quickly, I was copied on an email today from Mark Purple to the interim DPW director outlining that this process needs to start and let's get the ball rolling with applications to the planning board. So that's a good sign. When I did talk to Mark on the phone, he indicated, hopefully like in, by the March timeframe, things could start happening with that.
Ms. Houlihan.
Just a very quick question for you, Karina. When was that letter sent to select board, just to restate for the public?
September 12th.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Anything else on this? The next item on the agenda, planning board contingency in the memorandum of understanding. So I can take this one, because I asked that this be on here. So I had asked that this be on the agenda because I had read the original memorandum of understanding and was at the last select board or on, I guess, January 17th, or maybe later, or I don't know. But anyway, it appeared that the way that it was written was, they had contingency for town meeting, the town meeting can vote to pass this, and if not, the license continues. And the same with the planning board, it had, if St. Mark's, St. Mark's comes to the planning board for site plan approval, if they don't get approval, which is defined as either it is appealed or there are conditions that they don't agree with, then the land swap is null and void, but the license agreement is. So my question to the select board was, why bother going to town meeting if you're just going to continue on and do the same thing anyway? It seems like you have removed the power of town meeting with this license agreement remaining. So I had asked that town council come to this meeting to help us understand what this planning board contingency meant, because then if you read the license agreement, it said shall comply with all local, state, and federal law, which local law is site plan. So why have that there if they have to comply with site plan? So he had said it was premature because after that, well, after the last meeting, I guess, it was at the meeting before, the select board had asked for revisions to that and to amend the license agreement. So he said it was premature to come and discuss the old memorandum of understanding. So I have asked that he comes to the next meeting, but today the new memorandum of understanding posted on the select board packet for their meeting tomorrow night, and the, the planning board contingency is still there. And they've added a requirement that they apply no later than 30 days, and they also added, da, 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 no later than 30 days or provide notice that approval is not required, which, as Mr. Perry mentioned, it seemed that town council was indicating that they don't really need to come for site plan, although Karina had a long discussion with town council at his last office hours to, on planning board's jurisdiction under site plan with Dover, and you're required to come for site plan, but what you can regulate is limited under Dover. So this was disappointing and confusing, so I have asked that he comes to the next him or someone else at his firm if he can't make it to the next meeting to discuss this, and I guess he can discuss the road situation also. Mr. Mills?
I just, thank you for doing that legwork and asking for him to answer those questions proactively, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else have any comment? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Grant Harrington, 58 Flag Road. I will just note that in the select board packet tomorrow, there is a potential for a vote to be taken on the MOU.
Can you just speak into the microphone?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. On the select board agenda tomorrow, there is the potential for a vote to be taken on the MOU, which I think, you know, you, planning board has legitimate questions regarding the planning board contingency, so I'm not sure if the select board's inclined to take a vote, but there is a potential for it, so, you know, it would seem to me like perhaps urging the select board not to take a vote until that matter is resolved would be prudent. Thank you.
Thank you, I meant to say that and I forgot, thank you.
Could I add something? I actually think that that, I would like to take a vote, I guess, to, to just remove that paragraph. I've been doing my best to put my lawyer hat on, of course I'm not a lawyer, but to understand the Dover amendment, and as we know that there's only, I think, four sections of site plan that are considered reasonable regulation, and parking is one of them. And it struck me that in the paragraph that was in the license agreement that we were looking at from a couple of weeks ago, it mentions Dover in that paragraph, and so I think it, it would be, I mean, so to take a step back, town council supports all the boards, and I have to agree with Mr. Perry, I think that what was done was pretty, you know, like undeserving of us, you know, I just, I don't know if that's the right word, but I, I think that it diminishes the role that we have, but he shouldn't have done that. But aside from that, there's, there is some case law regarding parking and Dover that support reasonable regulation. I personally think it was a vulnerability and that, and Mr. Tullerman said that St. Mark's wanted that paragraph in there, he didn't, he admitted he didn't put that paragraph in, but because he supported. But because he supports all the boards, I think that we should just ask that they take that out because it does favor, obviously, St. Marx. But I don't think it's reasonable to put that in, in that agreement. And if, can I, can I read something? A case law from Dover? Just, just if I could for a second. Case law, not Dover, but from a case that was trustees of Tufts College versus Medford on parking. If you just listen to the words, you can understand, I think, that there's some, there's some flexibility. It says, "Local zoning requirements adopted under the proviso to the Dover amendment, which serve legitimate," this was from the case, "which serve legitimate municipal purposes sought to be achieved by local zoning, such as promoting public health or safety, preserving the character of the adjacent neighborhood, or one of the other purposes sought to be achieved by local zoning may be permissibly enforced." So there's a number of cases regarding parking in particular, on both sides, whether the private institution wanted the parking or whether the town wanted the parking. But the size, the number of parking spots relative to the total project can't be decided right now, just like site plan. You can't say if you're gonna, what you're going to condition on site plan if you haven't seen it. And so I think what we're being asked to with that provision for planning is to say, I'm not sure, it puts some sort of constraints on us and I just don't think that's fair. I think that there's flexibility for, and that parking is reasonable regulation. And when we finally do receive that site plan application, we'll give it due process. So I think it's just kind of, we just have to vote to take that away. I think that it's, they know that they're vulnerable with that section because that is one of only four sections that is reasonable regulation. And I think this board will consider that when we see it.
Can you just clarify the paragraph you're talking about?
So that, that is case law that's from Oh, so that
Well, the planning board contingency.
The contingency, sorry. Oh, the MOU contingency. Yes, yes.
Well, my opinion is that we should ask the select board not to vote on this tomorrow until we have a chance to discuss this with town council and what it means. It seems circular to me. It's protecting St. Marx, which I understand because, as you know, when, when developers come forward to, for a subdivision, say, they very rarely own the land. They have an agreement with the landowner that if they can't get their permits, then the sale is null and void. So I think it's kind of protecting them along that because they have, you know, the planning board and appeals. But it, it seems circular to me and doesn't make any sense. So I would, my opinion is that we ask the select board not to vote on this until we understand exactly what that planning board contingency is. Okay.
In what method would you like to convey that? Directly, at attendance, a letter? Is there something that, specific that we can?
A letter, I'll write something up and I'll get it to you tomorrow. Good morning.
All right, okay, thanks.
I can't attend tomorrow.
Okay.
My daughter turns 30.
Spring chicken.
Shocking when I'm only 20. Okay, can we move from this one? All right, where are we? Planner's report? Thank you, Greg.
Okay, planner's report. So I have an update. Ken's Foods, 325 Turnpike Road, part of the decision for the building expansion on the east side was a condition number six that required three drainage repairs. Two were previously done and as built, reviewed by Fussin' O'Neil. They, in December, they did the third repair. Fussin' O'Neil inspected it, provided an inspection report. As built were provided to Fussin' O'Neil, and this afternoon, we received a review letter of the as built from Fussin' O'Neil, essentially that everything is in order. So we have that in hand. And the Scott Doty from J.G. Crowe, J.C. Crowe Architects, asked that if that is the case, would the planning board allow sign off on the rest of the building permit? Because the restriction was that unless they have all three drainage repairs done and all three landscape fixes done, which was done as well, that they only could do four things under the building permit. So, we have the letter, I believe I forwarded it to you this afternoon, and it shows that everything's in order for that. So if the planning board is all right with it, I could sign on to the, I could update the building department that the planning board is all right with them with full building permit.
So they have complied with the condition of the
Correct.
Site plan modification.
Site plan and lead decision approvals.
I'm fine with that, anyone else?
Okay. All right, quickly. We already discussed that. Our building commissioner is retiring in March. I enjoyed working with her. I'm going to work as hard as I can with her until she actually retires, but she was here four years and she was a good teammate to the planning department as much as she could with the workload that was there. So, I, I'm sorry that she's leaving, she was good. Jesse wanted to talk a little bit about the Dell residential property that could potentially serve as an MBTA community's overlay area.
Thank you. So, part of the MBTA community's requirements is that 40 acres be within the zoning overlay district. So, a thought that we have to help the town accept this, this overlay district would be to utilize 30 acres at the Dell site and have only 10 acres be impacted within the required zone around the MBTA stop. So, we have to have at least 10 acres be within the quarter mile radius of the MBTA stop, excuse me, half mile, thank you. So, that's, this was a discussion, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Shopsey, there was no vote, formal vote to put this forward yet at this time. But this was a discussion at the last Shopsey meeting, and it struck me as, me personally, in my opinion, is a very good path forward toward making, toward meeting the MBTA community's requirement. So, just putting it out there for consideration for this board.
Thanks, Mr. Stein. Karina and I attended a meeting when Dell reviewed this property, and they had offered that they would grant an easement to Crystal Pond as an egress to that property. They asked us to consider it for 40B. So I think they're very willing and open, and I think that's a great idea to make sure it's part of the overlay district. So I would fully support that.
I spoke with the chair of Shopsey, and she's also interested in perhaps the town purchasing that with community preservation funds for affordable housing and open space, and somehow figuring out how to do affordable housing there and have the overlay there at the same time that kind of checks off two boxes at, at once.
So it sounds very intriguing, and from putting my CPC hat on, I just, the current situation of CPC, all our bonding's been used up. So I don't know how much for what is already set aside for affordable housing or what we have left after we go through with the new high school sports complex. So, there's another piece of that, just to plug the CPC a little bit, there is conversations about possibly raising the surcharge from 1% to 3%. It's been requested of the CPC if we support that going forward. I think the select board has a warrant article out there to do that. Don't know if it'll make it for this town meeting because there's so much that is on the plate, but maybe a special fall, fall town meeting that could come about. But, so, just trying to advocate for if CPC funds are going to be used for something like this, that, you know, it sounds like it definitely will qualify and more would have to be dug into. But, obviously, affordable housing is something that we can, the CPC can fund, just we, we need to come up with the funds. So, just saying that, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
We got an update on National Grids tree removal of a tree, on 212 Southville Road that had been an imminent hazard. So, that's been taken care of, and we've been getting really nice reports from Chris Leroy on this information. So we really appreciate that, the diligence and the follow through that we stay informed too, so.
If I could just make a quick comment on this.
Yes.
Yeah, we've been getting great communication, which is something that we have never seen before, and it's fabulous. But I just wanted, I sent an email to, to Chris to caution that imminent hazard means that a tree is deemed to be such a danger that we cannot go through with the 14-day hearing process. It needs to be removed immediately to mitigate that hazard. Yet this tree was deemed an imminent hazard in September. So, this, this isn't a loophole just to circumvent the hearing process, and we need to be careful and understand what, what that is there for.
Okay, and at the department head meeting, I was attended last week, the new interim, the interim DPW director is Abdul Al Khatib, and I invited him to come to the planning office to discuss the initiatives that the planning board is focused on regarding trees and scenic roads and open space. So we made an open invitation, so we'll try to work with him as well on anything that comes up in that regard. And, Colleen has good news, the contract was signed to get the zoning map, current, the current zoning map created, because it was 2006, so, yeah, it's good news. So were they going to recreate that one because there's no electronic files other than a PDF? And then once they do that
Once with the base map.
Yep, once the base map.
And then, then he'll, we'll have to contract him, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'll point mine over to you.
We'll have to contract him again, but again, you know, go along with all the efforts with GIS through the IT department and the assessors, of course. So he's working on a contract with the same group right now to do his KMA reports.
Yep, and we're happy to say that that came in at $800 to create the existing map, and we have another $700 in order to address the downtown district additional information for this year. And then the third phase will be to then go through, do the research to determine if there's any other districts that need to be included, and then do a final update to get it current based on any of those things in fiscal year '24. And, so that lends, go ahead.
Then just keep it up after that.
And then just keep it up. So that process is going forward. And then, the other thing is the budget for planning board. Marnie had attended the advisory select board meeting on the Saturday afternoon, evening, and I guess it was agreed to that two of the budget items for contract miscellaneous services, the additional zoning map update and the MBTA community's work, those two items would be covered by ARPA. The third one, the deed research database line item would be determined after, that would stay in the budget for now. So I don't know if there's a formal process, did they mention? Do I have to write a letter to the select board requesting it, or they understand that?
So that was based on $500,000 of ARPA monies, and they determined that two or three requests would be, would be appropriate. The deed research, the $5,000 for that was in question. The select board, Ms. Cook basically said, "It's not in stone, the $500,000, they might make amenities to, to fund other things." So, there's an opportunity for them to either include the $5,000 or to have us put it in our own budget for town meeting, and that would be decided for, prior to town meeting when they approve what budget they're going to put forward. So I don't think there's any additional work for you, Karina, I think you'll be informed of what their decision is.
Either way, though
Either way, yes.
Those funds
Correct.
So I don't have to do anything formal to request them, and they'll vote on it at some point, which then can, will have time to use those funds versus a fiscal year deadline.
That was my understanding, and I believe I sent an email to that same vein, and we haven't heard back from them. So I assume that my confirmation of, of my understanding is accurate.
Super, thank you. Nothing new at 154 Turnpike Road, but I'm still optimistic that they'll be submitting their modifications. Oh, yes, and for Northborough Road, we're getting really close, they submitted a surety agreement, this is 156 Northborough Contractor Base, they submitted a surety agreement. We had some minor changes, the plant list had a little bit of updates, but we need, Mimi's looking at that finally, and we have a certifying letter from the landscape architect. So we're this close to getting that going, and that's probably happened this week. So Mimi and I have been corresponding on that like we're supposed to, and we'll get that going. Is that a long sentence for a short, we're getting it done, I'm sorry. And I think that's it from planner's report.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from January 9th, 2023 is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Hulahan abstain.
Demiria, yes.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes
We don't have
We don't have them.
Not yet.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes. Stein, yes?
Hulahan, yes.
Demiria, yes.